Call a meeting of Silver Falls School District Board Order. All board members are in attendance. Flag salute.
Fledgling regions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Agenda review.
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and second to approve the agenda as published. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose me. Pass unanimously. Consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and second to approve the consent agenda as published. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Nays? Pass unanimously. And our student representatives. Mariah Kai.
Hello, my name is Maria Whacker. I am a sophomore and one of your ASB school board representatives from Silverton High School.
My name is Kai Holly and I'm a senior and the other ASB school board representative.
I'm very excited to announce that our best fox ever show was a success. In total, our best fox ever contestants raised $27,931. Ryder Britton was our 2025 best fox ever winner, raising $9,606 individually. This money is going to support Medical Teams International and Silverton Area Community Aid.
The annual teen art show is happening at the Borland Gallery. Many of our talented SHS students have won awards for their artwork, so make sure you go check out their displays.
Our performing arts at SHS have been busy and successful. The theater department is working on their spring play, The Actor's Worst Nightmare. The shows will be on the 23rd, 24th, and 25th of May. Concert choir did amazing at their state competition last week, placing fourth out of the 12 teams who qualified to state. They also have a concert coming up on the 22nd.
This Thursday, there will be the Red Cross Blood Drive here at high school, put on by the Health Science Club. Signups are still open and they would love as many donations as possible.
Our clubs and activities at the high school are continuing their success through the spring. The speech and debate team competed at the OSAA state championships this month. Congratulations to Griffin White, Patrick Hart, who were finalists in student congress, Jared Wentworth, who got sixth after dinner speaking, and Shane Johnson, who got fifth and after dinner speaking. The team took home fifth in the state for 5A schools.
Our spring sports are in full swing with track, baseball, softball, tennis, golf, and boys volleyball, all doing well in their competition seasons. Baseball is fourth in the conference and 10th in state. Softball is third in the conference and seventh in state. Our track team is running strong and has a home meet Wednesday with JV districts on Friday. Boys and girls golf has regionals on the 12th and 13th of May. Boys volleyball has a record of eight and two and is ranked 15th in the state. And girls and boys tennis have also been playing great and are going to districts this week.
OSCEC competed at state last week and they all did amazing and had great rides, with drill getting third and qualifying for regionals. Check out the OSAA website and Silverton Athletics Instagram page to follow upcoming games to cheer on our foxes in the rest of their season.
As we approach the end of our school year, we go closer to the most anticipated event of the year, spirit games.
Our spirit week will be May 26th to May 30th, with events happening all week.
Tuesday, the 27th, we will have our talent show. Wednesday, the 28th, we will have our annual power flag football. Thursday, the 29th, is our senior awards night. And Friday, the 30th, we will have our spirit games.
We want to make sure everyone knows we continue to post information about upcoming events and happenings on the Silverton High School social media pages through Facebook and Instagram, as well as Silverton High School website and on Parent Square.
We are excited to finish the year strong and be great foxes who represent our fox values of respect, dignity, compassion, and inclusion.
Thank you, everyone, for all your support and hard work to help us have the best school year possible.
Have a great evening and go foxes.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for you guys. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Senior?
Yep.
Sophomore.
Sophomore. You guys have done great this year. All right, let's just look at our next board meetings on the 9th.
Yeah.
Congratulations a little bit before that. Are you gonna be back here for the 9th?
I think, I think I am coming back for the 9th, because I don't think the new ones are gonna wanna come in, so.
And you did a great job at Best Fox Ever.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
That was awesome.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we'll have Jamie McCarty with report on Robert Frost.
Well, I'd love to have you. I didn't see her. I looked back a minute ago, she wasn't there, and then she showed up, just in the nick of time. That seat's warm for you. And he answered a lot different than I. I mean, if I graduated on the 9th and I had to come back, there is no way, as much as I like you guys, I'd be back. Welcome. I'd like to say thank you for having us tonight and Robert Frost School. It's an honor and a privilege always to be here at least once a year and let you know how, how our school's doing. And it's just, it has been an honor to be at Robert Frost and to be supporting that school and the students and staff and parents. They've been working so hard on all of, all of our systems of support. And that's kinda what I just plan on talking to you guys a little bit about tonight, is just the systems of support that we've been able to put in. We know that all of our kids don't come in at the same level. And we, the Silver Falls School District has been working pretty hard the last three years. And I'll kinda go into it with you a little bit with Oregon RTI and our MTSS systems. You'll start to hear a lot more about that as we move forward, but we're in our third year of a five-year kinda deal with Oregon RTI. And I just kinda wanna talk to you just a little bit about the work we've been doing and that staff and students have been putting in. And Katie, please feel free at any time if you feel like there's a little something that you can offer the board on just the staff and the work.
Tell them what RTI stands for.
Oregon Response to Intervention. So behaviorally, I'm gonna take you through that a little bit. And I know your time's really valuable, so I'm gonna try to go as fast as I can. And if there's any questions at the end, please, please ask. You can do the clicker. Next one. So what I shared, I shared with you last year, this is kind of two years and a little bit at Robert Frost. And I just wanna share one slide I shared with this group last year. And it was just what I learned when I first got to Robert Frost and just what an incredible staff it is. But it was a pretty fractured culture. I was told all the time, I'm the 10th principal in three years. And so I was number 10, that's my favorite number. And so I'm hoping it stops there. But they just need a lot of consistency, some leadership, and a team pulling together, looking for the same mission. And so what I really saw was urgent, was a need for systems. And I heard like the first two or three weeks, we gotta get some systems in place. We gotta get systems for our kids, for our academics, and for our school. And so we got to work really quick on systems. And really, it came down to the master schedule. And we had to make sure that that master schedule was set up for success for kids. That we put adults, what we wanted aside, and we had to come up with the best structure for our kids, so that their learning is the number one priority. And that behavior, we had to decrease behavior, and we had to increase academics. And that was our biggest mission. And so we got to work on our master schedule. We put systems in place, all the way in tier one, which means that's about 80% of your kids come in at tier one. Tier two, about 15%. And tier three, that's your 5% that really need that extra, extra support. We really started with a strong PBIS team, started an attendance team, behavior team, intervention team. We started 20% meetings, meaning you're 20% of your students that could be served through our Title I. And so we really spent a lot of time on our 20%, but really where we're working really hard right now is our core. And that is our tier one classroom, everything that happens in the classroom. And I think, you know, we had so much intervening going on that really, if we don't start in the classroom, there's no way you can intervene out of that issue. And so we've just really went to work in the classroom in all areas in tier one, so that our tier two and tier three aren't so drastic. And it's been really fun to do, it's been really fun to see, and it's been really fun to see our staff step up. Just getting into the work of the MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support. We have established those strong systems academically, behaviorally, and the social emotional needs of our students, just through a proactive approach and a data-driven approach. So everything we do, we're looking at our data and what comes next. There's no inconsistencies there, there's no, oh, I think, or I want, or this is what I think should happen. The data tells the story of what needs to happen, and then we respond immediately to the student need in our school. Academics, I said we have partnered with ORTII, Oregon Response to Instruction and Intervention. And our district goal is just to keep improving there every year. And so it's just the Oregon Response to Instruction and Intervention. It's a project on the behalf of the State of Oregon Department of Education. There's only 15, I believe 15 districts in the State of Oregon that have this opportunity. We're set up with support from the state. Sharon Hofford is our kind of district coach that comes in and really analyzes stuff with us and helps us create these systems, and I'm really thankful for her. And so looking, I'll just take you through the tier one, tier two, and tier three of academics. Tier one is our 100%. And so that's every kid in the core classroom, looking at that data, how can we improve our instruction? How can we change our teaching strategies? How can we gain, and so we're not intervening so much? How can our core instruction be so powerful and so engaging that behavior decreases and academics increase? And so this year's all about our 100% and really working in grade level teams. We'll meet in the fall, winter, spring, we'll look at what our data shows, we'll make improvements, we'll make changes. What does our data show in the winter? We'll make improvements and we'll make changes. And June 3rd, I think's our last 100% meeting. Did it work? What are we celebrating? Where are we starting next year? Tier two, those are our grade level teams, get together with our intervention teachers, our title, our ELD, our special education. And that is that 20%. How was all of our instruction supporting the core classroom and then moving right to, for a double dose, triple dose, to those students that aren't getting it in the core, in the 100%? And we've, we just have an incredible team at Robert Frost. We're all working together for the same mission. We have 10, we have 11 interventionists with our assistants that are delivering the small instruction all over our school in reading. And that 100% to 20%. And then our tier three is for those 5% of students that still aren't getting it after that. And we're just looking at, are they making improvement? If they're making improvement, tier two's great. But if we're looking at that data and we're saying, these students are not making the growth, they're not making catch-up growth, we've changed the intervention, we've changed the instruction, and they're still not making growth, then we have to intensify and there's no quit. Like, there's no excuse, it's on us as a school. What do we do next? And that comes to your care team, your IPS team, 504 plans, IEPs, behavioral support plans. And so we got teams working on all of that for those kiddos, so that they can make that growth. They deserve it. And so that's a little bit about the tier one, tier two, tier three in academics. And then behavior's the same thing, right? All of our kids aren't the same. They come to us from so many backgrounds, trauma-informed, you know, just different homes, right? They all come to us in a different place every single day, and we have to find a way to reach them if they're not meeting expectation behaviorally. That's our PBIS team, is our 100, supports our 100% core. And in the next slide, I can show you just a little bit about what does that tier one behavior look like, supports. We begin every day with a positive affirmation in every class. We have 15 minutes of social emotional learning, where we're taking our students through certain types of behaviors, certain types of things that classrooms are struggling in. So we started this year doing a core screener on every student in our school. And each teacher does that core screener, and then they have their screening from their class, and then they know what are tier one, tier two, and tier three students, and we go to work right from there. We start designing lessons in our core that meet the needs of those kids in our classrooms. And we'll do that four times this year. We'll go in and again, is that core instruction working? If it's not, we'll go into tier two in a minute. But some, also some tier one, just universal expectations around our school. They're all over our school. Be safe, respectful, responsible signs, it's like you're walking into an airport. There's arrows, where we go, where we walk, how we line up. Posse lips are given out to every kid doing what they should be doing. Bear sightings are given to every class that is showing a full class doing what they should be doing. We have a character trait focus every single month. We make a big deal at our assemblies. We have awesome kid awards, we have character trait awards. And our students are constantly working for that next character trait and that next, every month, we have a new character trait. We talk about it, we teach about it, we bring in positive speakers, we create school shirts, and we try to do all the things that bring our community together. PBIS team is a tier one. All staff, daily, consistently, working to build a positive relationship with kids. Our goal's four to one. We want four positives to anything negative that we might state to a student. And I've actually asked them, let's work for 20 to one. Because kids want positive, they wanna be surrounded by positive people, they want positive influence, they want role models, and role models are positive, always. It doesn't, we talk all the time, it doesn't matter what we're walking into the door with. We all have our own lives, we all have our own families, we all have tough days, and we gotta enter those doors positive, ready for every student. And I talked about the universal screener we've done in classrooms. So those are all our tier one supports that we've kinda put into place. And then I grouped tier two and tier three together. Is, tier two is just reteaching. If they didn't get it, if they're, if they're, you know, if we're making mistakes, or we're having the same behaviors and we have the same things happening, we gotta reteach. We can't just expect kids to know it and to do it because I said so. They need more coaching, they need more teaching, they need more time, they need an adult. We have check-in, check-out. So any student in tier two that needs some behavior support, we have adults around our school that that kid has a, I kinda put a picture of the card up there, but it's a little bit of a daily tracker. And those kids are going to every piece of their day, and they are working for an incentive at the end of the day. Some kids, we have three incentives built into their day. The younger students, they don't remember what happened at 8 o'clock and your reward or consequence at 3 o'clock, right? So they need, sorry, a little more reminders. But that's kind of the look of what a check-in, check-out sheet might look like at our school. We then go to social groups. Kids all kinda, my, three or four kids might be battling with the same thing that they need some help with. And so I don't know if you wanna speak to social groups at all a little bit?
Yeah, so I can say like, based on the SEL screeners, we look at social groups. So they might be struggling with self-management is an area that, well, I'll say fifth graders, all kids, but really fifth graders also need to work on. And so we group kids together that struggle with that same skill, and then they are seen by either our student success coach, our guidance counselor, Mr. McCarty. We also look as classroom teachers and see what kind of lessons can we amp up in the classroom based on that as well. But they get go and they get specify, like, focus on that skill. Or maybe they're having some friendship problems. And so how do we work through those friendship problems? How can we problem solve without, you know, you hurt my feelings, you must do what I want? Like, how can we look at that? Especially at the younger grades, like that collaborative problem solving. And so the social groups are really based off of SEL screener, it's based off the check-in, check-out. I will say too, with check-in, check-out, what's really cool is seeing kids by this time of the year, when I, they come up to me, I'm like, what do you think you got for this period? And most of the times, they are very accurate and say, well, I kind of wasn't focusing for part of it. So maybe like a one or a yes, no. But it also gives them that chance to reflect and really start thinking about their behavior and like how, and so like one kid today, I said, oh, what was it? He's like, it's a yes, no. I go, what are we going to do tomorrow to make it a yes? He's like, I'm going to focus the entire class time. I said, awesome, what are we going to do to focus? And he was able to give me some strategies. I said, great, let's make sure that we have a great rest of the day. He's like, okay. So even if they're not meeting their goal, they're still reflecting off of it, which is really great to see.
And then we have a tier two behavior team. We met actually today in our school, and we had 31 students in a tier two. We analyzed all 31 students today, where they're at, are we phasing them out, are they making growth, are they not? We intensified seven students on more intensifications, they just needed a little more support, so we changed some things around. And it's really fun to say, like, we can tell every parent at our school that every kid in all three tiers are being met. And what we're doing, and what the data shows, and how they're being met. And I think that's the most important, because you can always say, hey, we're doing great things at the school. But when you can really show them what the data's showing, and our conversations, and invite them into meetings, and that's pretty powerful. Attendance team. We know that if kids don't show up to school, it's really hard to teach them, it's really hard to get a year's growth. And since COVID, attendance has really been tough. There's a lot of struggle with mental health, with a lot of just different reasons why kids aren't showing up to school, but attendance has been a big one. So we've really went to work on our attendance. We meet monthly, we have data on every single month, percentages of every student in our school. And anytime we see a drop or dip in attendance, we're analyzing why. We have secretaries on there, we have counselors, everyone that's in the know on those students. And we're able to really analyze and find out what we need. And what we found out is like, attendance letters don't work. Sending an attendance letter home and saying, but really, it's phone calls home, it's reaching out, it's how can we support you? It's positive interaction, it's not punitive. It's calling kids in, asking, how can we help you get to school? Do you know where your bus stop is? Is there an older someone that, around your area that can help? We started sending these postcards home, just, we miss you. Like, and then on the postcard, how can we support your student? And is there anything Robert Frost can do for your kiddo? And just asking questions like that, because if you go the other route, it just doesn't work. And people are doing the best with what they can where they're at that day. And so we got a few students that we'll just go run and pick up, hop in a car, and we got the okay, and we'll just make sure they get to school. And so it just takes everyone to pull together to try to get kids to school as much as we can. And so our attendance team has been really powerful this year. And then I think just positive school-wide culture. I've talked to this group before, and I think I've let you know how much I think positive culture in a school is probably the most important thing. Because if you walk through the door, and people love to walk through the door, and they can't wait to get to work, and they love what they're doing for kids, and there's a mission, there's goals, there's a vision, people love to be a part of that. And right now, our staff is amazingly motivated to help students and kids in our school. And it starts with positivity, teamwork, smiles, high fives, hugs, singing in the cafeteria. I love to sing to kids in the cafeteria every morning. I make up songs, and I don't even know where they come from, but they love the songs. And I got the worst voice, so. But just like the nights we have at Robert Frost, inviting our parents into our school and creating that culture, I think really the game changer for the school was going K-5. I think it was the best thing we did, is Mark Twain and Robert Frost, a K-5 school, because now we have ownership for six years in our school, our PTC's as strong as ever, and we have people bought in. You know, the K, the 3-5, ah, take it or leave it, right? My kid's gonna be at the middle school, it's just, there's not as much there. But we've had Reading Under the Stars night, we just finished with Art Night, we partnered with Silverton Association of Art, and they just came through and did some amazing things. We have our character trait, we have, for this, last week, we had For the Love of Reading Assembly, and they raised $14,000 for reading and minutes. Battle of the Books, we just attended a PBIS conference in Portland, 10 of our staff went. It was so powerful, and we all came back with so many ideas, and we're gonna try to do two or three of them. Because you come back and you're just a little overwhelmed from all the great things you heard. And then I just wanna lastly talk about our partnership with our PTC. They have been a very, very strong group. The turnout every, every month is amazing, they've raised over $45,000 this school year. And I'm not gonna go through all of that stuff, but we just figured, built a beautiful covered area for our car riders, kids were standing out in the rain waiting for cars. And so we just were able to build, I don't know if you guys have seen that in front of Robert Frost, but it's really been a game changer for us. We bought a brand-new scoreboard for our gym, and then all of the things. They just purchased $4,000 in reading books for our students, and you can read, the list goes on there. And those are the events that they sponsor at our school this year. But it's a really go-getter group that has, has been really great for our school and our kids, and I just wanna really commend them for the leadership they've shown, and that they're just, they gotta go get them. They wanna do anything possible out there for our students, so. And then just a few pictures, you can go through those. And those are our character trait awards for the month. We just finished with Art Night, so all the kids, there's a, we had a full gallery walk around our whole school, and then in the middle of our school, we had different art projects kids could be doing with their parents. We had an ELD night, which was amazing for our English language learners, and invited all of our parents in. And it was a night where we taught about what ELD is, what we're doing for their students, how the ELPA works, how the testing works for their students, how the instruction works, and what we can do better to serve our ELD community.
That looks like a really good turnout.
It was amazing night, you guys. I would love to, you were there, you're in that picture, you're in the very far back right there. So, we had our superintendent there, and it was so awesome night. And the next one, I think's a picture, we had classrooms set up for the kiddos while we talked with the parents, and so there was activities in our classrooms.
I will say, our ELD teacher, I asked her how it went, and she said that one of the most impactful things is that she had a parent say, I feel safe and supported at this school. And that just brought tears to her eyes.
We just had our kindergarten roundup, we're gonna have, I believe, three kinder classes next year, so we're already over 60. And like, when you have a bouncy house at your kindergarten roundup, I mean, it's, it's a game changer. And really, parents are really worried about kinder, and they're, especially their first child, and we had no kids hide, we had no kids cry. Bounce house is the thing they see, right? So they played with all their new friends, we had juice and everything they could, and we just heard like, what a great start for, like, our kids aren't worried at all about kinder. So that was a fun night. Reading Under the Stars, we had 14 classrooms, our library, we had a guest artist, or a guest reader come, we had 475 community members show up. You can see them all in their PJs and stuffies, and pretty neat night. I think the next one's a classroom, that's just one of the classrooms, Reading Under the Stars. That's our Art Night, that was our gallery walk around our entire school. We had a student cooking competition this year, Mr. Paul gets them in, and they cook this, the whole thing, all day, and then staff votes on it, it was pretty neat. And that's just a picture of our character trait assemblies. New scoreboard, that's our new covered area. And you have any questions?
Jamie, can you elaborate, well, any information, generalization about, I mean, about that $45,000 from the parent club? I mean, that's something I've never really heard from as an in-town, from the in-town schools, that was always a trait of the rural schools. And to me, that's just a sign of everything's firing on all cylinders there. When the parents and the staff are interacting, and everybody wants to keep supporting it, pour a little more gas on the fire, so to speak, and give it more energy, and I just, good job, everybody.
Thank you.
And I think that's also being a K-5, because you have all the kids at one school, and it's not split and doing fundraisers, a different thing?
It's a six-year investment.
Six years, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's super great.
And we're getting a lot of kinder parents in there that know they have six years.
Yep.
And they really wanna get in and make a difference for their child. Where third grade, you know, it's just a little harder to, for a three-year window, so.
Yeah, that's, that's great, yeah, it's good to see it paint off.
Well, I'll go down the line, because I think quite a bit of people wanna tell you awesome work. You are awesome for my kids at Victor Point, and you're changing lives at this school as a parent. You're awesome, dude. One of the biggest things I'm concerned with in the district is like behavior and discipline, and it seems like you're crushing it. And I just kinda wanted, like, what's an affirmation you guys use? I'm curious. Because you said you guys, every day or every week, you have a new affirmation.
Yeah, just a positive something that we're talking about for the day, and then we reflect at the end. And did we achieve that? But I really think it comes down to the systems, Josh, and just, kids understand what to expect, what we expect, expectations are set, and then we love them. Because we know kids will reach the expectation, if you care about them, you love them, you reteach them, and you want it for them as much as, much as you can.
And that goes into my next question is, you know, it would appear that it would be impossible for kids not to improve behaviorally and academically at Robert Frost right now, with the team that you guys got. Do you have data on behavior, if it's improved? Like, how do we track it, I guess?
Yeah, we we try. We just went, moved to Synergy last year and so there's a full MTSS system in Synergy. And so we have every piece of data. And now we're starting to track it from January to January, year to year. We look at it in our PBIS meetings, every meeting of where our high data referrals are. And then we want to go out and reteach out there and re-talk to our our staff about what what are we seeing and then where do we need to reteach? What more incentives? Because we know the more you blow a whistle and tell them no and stop it and quit it, it's not gonna do it. They need positive incentives. So we just try to create as many of those as possible. But we have every piece of data. I'd love to show you sometime.
It shows. Good trends. My last one is, this is important. I'm curious, do you know why when the kids are not showing up, like attendance wise? What are the reasons? Are kind of maybe top two?
There's so many, but a lot of times it comes down to parent schedules and their work schedules and working nights and then can't, don't have busing or can't get them to a bus. Really, it comes down to just every home's different. And like, I think it's getting tougher for people out there to, number one, you know, do all the things they need to at times to get kids to school. I can't give you a specific of like, there's no more, one more than other. It's just there's so many different things happening out there. That some days it's tough to get to school.
I imagine that that you are one of the ones driving to kids' houses and picking them up.
For sure.
Appreciate that.
I was just gonna say, there's multiple things that stuck stuck out, but great job with you and the rest of the team there. I really like the using the data. And then it sounds like you guys are really aggressive with providing supports on the front end and reevaluating. I think that's substantial. The character trade, I think that's huge. And then I think was your opening slide, you had thankful every day for the opportunity. I love that. I think that can apply to anyone that walks in the building or anyone that, just very, very thoughtful. So keep up the good work and thanks, Dara. Well done.
Just wanted to comment, visiting your building, that it's always very, you get that positive feel throughout the building, wherever you go in it. Teachers, the students, the staff, all being very positive with each other and 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 everyone's order to it, but not regimentation to it, if you follow what I mean. It's a good vibe. Your building gives off.
I think the donuts help. Phil brings donuts.
That doesn't help with the students. Well, thank you for a great job.
And I know there's a few of you leaving. I just want to say thank you. May, it's been an amazing board and you guys work so well together. And I, it's been an awesome run you guys have had, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Jamie.
And now our Silver Falls Education Association. Before you ladies begin, I'd like to say a few things. Last week was National Teachers Week, Licensed Staff Week. And it shouldn't be just a week. It's year-round. And we do appreciate you guys so much, our licensed staff. They, you are the frontline. You are the ones, you know, students. Teacher says, you know, and they get home and all this sort of stuff and that's gospel. And it's just a great job and we are so privileged here in Silver Falls School District to have the staff we have. And that's not just blowing fluff. That's known around. And we really do appreciate you and everything that you do for our our kids. And I'll give other board members an opportunity to say something before I turn it over to you. It's open mic, guys.
I can start. The word that comes to mind is grateful. I think there's few other professions that have such a profound impact in our young people outside. You know, their immediate parents and family and guardian and the time and effort and energy and all the things that we see, don't see behind the scenes that you all put in. It's overwhelming and it's greatly appreciated. Especially coming out of the last year, everyone coming together and realizing it was gonna be a challenging year and and stepping up and doing the work and pushing through the hard times. So very, very grateful and appreciated.
I'll just say it's, I'm extremely grateful as well. I know it's hard, but I can't imagine how hard it's been the last couple of years and especially this last one. So extremely grateful for you guys. Love you guys. Thanks for being here for our kids. My kids and thank you so much for everything you guys do. And also this role, I know it's a hard one too, so.
I think the biggest thing that I can echo, build on what has already been said is just appreciation for your consistency in what you do every day for every one of our kids. And that's not an easy task. And again, considering what has gone on this year and and the resources constraints that have that have been presented to our district. Consistently every day you guys show up and make it better for our kids. So thank you.
Yeah, exactly. I'd just like to echo everyone's previous statements. It's been a real tough four, five years. And appreciate it. Thank you.
I've got another another kid graduating this year and I was just looking through all of the all of the invitations to his grad grad party. And there were so many teachers in there and it just made me, it just is a good reminder of how impactful and and what everybody's put into his life and how how, you know, personally valuable that is. And so thanks very much.
I think I echoing what Aaron said and we're in countdown territory now, you know? And we all know those pictures of what the teacher looks like at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, in the end of the year. And those are so true. And just getting up out of bed every day is a challenge. So I appreciate you and being there for our kiddos who sometimes don't make it to school. And also just wanted to kind of bring it full circle. I think the the environment that Jamie's providing at Robert Frost, like it's those things that keep our teachers happy and keep our teachers here because we're part of systems that work and that's what we want. So it is teacher appreciation and I just want to say that, to me, that's like the thing that is most important to keep our teachers around is having a working environment that feels like you're, you can do your best for kids. So anyway, thank you for everybody. Pass along our our well wishes to to your your brother and we really appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you very much. So I'm just gonna kind of change the direction. So this is kind of a bittersweet address for me. This will be my last board address as president. And it's also, I'm retiring at the end of the school year. So this, I told all my students today and it was, it was, it's bittersweet. It was really hard. So, yeah, it's.
Couple of them complained to me that she was leaving too.
Some of the kids I've had since middle school, so or even some from elementary, so a while, yeah. Okay. Negotiations. They were a very, very different experience this year as compared to twenty-three. We're proud to say that we're ninety-nine percent done after only three meetings and that's huge. So for some perspective, it took five sessions to reach a tentative agreement on any article. The last, in our last negotiations, which is why it went three hundred and seventy days. So three sessions, we're we're very happy with that. We can finalize our negotiations and start a ratification process once the calendar, the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar is finalized. We agreed to a one-year contract. So we'll have, they will have to negotiate next spring. But with, so with the shorter contract, we only opened up a limited number of articles to keep it just very direct, very, very directed to focus on what we really need to do to get through the next year. So some of the highlights that were agreed upon were sick leave also includes mental health conditions and treatments. And then also we have an expand, expanded parameters for bereavement leave. We use the OFLA? One of them. The language matches, anyway. It it matches with that and it it just expands who you're who you're allowed to use that bereavement leave for, because it was very restrictive before and we know that not all families are the same and not all family is blood. So that's that's a big, a big change for us. Our middle and high school language arts teachers now have an additional grading day, which which is great, especially considering the larger caseloads for them. All K twelve teachers now will get subpay if they are asked to combine a classroom if a sub can't be found. There were, we kind of thought that that's what we did before, but there was a little loophole in the language, so we kind of firm that up. We also have clear expectations for staff. Mandatory attendance at at staff functions that has to be made available at the beginning of the year. So staff know what their their year is gonna look like for for the school activities, evening activities. At our last session, the district presented a package proposal that includes included a two-point-five COLA, a twenty-five dollar increase in monthly insurance contributions and a fifty-dollar increase to the insurance opt-out. They asked to add a district tag coordinator and a district testing coordinator, the stipends for that. What we really appreciated was that they offered a very respectful counter to our proposals and and streamlined negotiations. It's hard, hard, hard to articulate how vastly different this experience was. We were sitting around rectangular tables, just going back and forth and laughing and joking, but having productive conversations and making these changes. And and it was just, it was incredible. It was just awesome. So Tony, thank you very much for leading that. We really appreciate it for your entire entire team and and Phil was there too. But I I I really, really hope that this sets sets a precedent. I know we're not always gonna agree, but that's okay. We're still colleagues and that was the important thing is is just the respectful conversation, professional conversation that went back and forth. It was, it was, it was a beautiful thing. It's how they all should be. So the past two years have kind of flown by in a good and bad way. I mean, it it's been a challenging two years. They've been, there's been a lot of lessons that we've learned. And there've also been experiences that I hope no future SFE president has to endure. You know, the the process that we had to go through and and just the upheaval of last year. But yet, we're encouraged because of the new leadership that we have now and the the wonderful future. It looks like a very bright future that we're that we're facing. We have strong leadership and it's it's gonna be a good thing. It's gonna be a good thing. So it's a good counter to what we went through last year. So thank you very much. Yeah, we're just, this is the last one, so. Kind of bittersweet. Yeah. Any questions or anything for us?
No, just want to say congratulations, Lori.
Thank you very much.
Your retirement and I very much enjoyed working with you alongside you last year. So I found you to be a very easy president to work with, so.
It's been a great experience and I appreciate that. Our new, we will be doing elections this month, so the new president will take over at the June board meeting.
Lori, I just want to say thanks for your service to our district. Really, you know, your your heart and soul you've given to this, to this, your career and as association president and you worked really hard at that. I just want to again say thank you for your service. I wish you the best in retirement.
Thank you.
Lori, you were you were awesome. One of the things I appreciate about you guys coming up is the more honest feedback you can give. Really helps, I think, us as a board. You know, even if you got to say stuff that is pretty tough for us to hear. Maybe decisions you're disappointed in. I think it's all fair that we hear about that and so that we make good decisions. And I feel like you guys did a great job of that, you know? And you bear a lot, a big brunt last year on your shoulders, being the head of SFEA. You did it with grace. You did the best you could. And it was a lot more fun this year seeing you actual smile and be a little bit happier. So thank you for your time here. Sorry to see you, though.
Lori, I'll just thank for your leadership again in a heavy time period and I think you've earned a retirement and wish you the best and hope you're are well. And again, just can't thank you enough.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Public comment. Okay. Time of meeting for a public comment. If you wish to speak, raise your hand to be recognized by the board chair. If attending remotely, please use the raise hand feature within Zoom. For the record, please provide your name and relationship to district. Please keep individual remarks to three minutes of speaking as a representative on behalf of a group of three or more. Time will be extended to five minutes. The second public comment period will occur later in the meeting that is specific to discussion and action items only. Board will not hear complaints against individual district staff or board members during public comment. Please understand that the board's primary role is to listen and you will likely not receive an immediate response. Finally, remember, we all model the way of our students and ask that you share your thoughts respectfully and in accordance with the Silver Falls School District Board decorum agreement. Do we have anyone that wants to make comment for the board? And then here, do we have anyone online?
We have no hands raised online.
Okay, we will move on. Administering staff reports and looks like Kim Ellison, you're up first, it looks like. There's, there.
Thanks. Sorry. My report is actually pretty short today. So this is my May superintendent's report. So on our agenda for me this evening, just talk about licensed educator awards. I'm gonna talk a little bit about Shemeckin's bond and then just a brief statement about our budget meeting tomorrow. So these are educators of the year and they were all very happy to be honored. And so we gave awards to, for the K five group, it was Jennifer Draper at Butte Creek. Julie Marshall in the six-eight category for Central Howell and then Dawson Hughes was our high school winner. And so this is a picture of Julie and I and then hugging with Tony and Phil watching on it. And then the other, these don't really show up as good as I would like them to. But we put these out on on our Facebook and website too. So congratulations to those well-deserving educators. And I think when we were in Julie's classroom, Julie started to tear up and cry. That was really, it was kind of emotional. Marissa started crying. I started crying. Tony controlled himself. Phil controlled himself. And then the bonus was, we had to go look at the baby emu downstairs. So, yeah, Julie's classroom, they hatched an emu egg. And the kids hadn't seen it yet. We were, we had to see the chick, so we went down, looked at it. It was really cool. It was hiding in the basement until the kids could finish their testing. So, gosh, every testing supersedes everything, so. Our teachers and classified employees of the year will be honored at the First Citizens banquet next year. So I think that's a fun way. We we have that in the budget for us to buy a table and start doing that again. And I think that's a really great way to share with the community about our wonderful employees and how much they contribute to the young people in our community. So I think that's exciting. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about Shemeckin's bond. So their bond is on the on the ballot on May twentieth. And Shemeckin is a great partner for us. And so they are using these funds to build a new trade center. So it's a new facility that would provide specialized training and certification opportunities to grow a local skilled workforce in high-demand trades. And then it would fund thirty million in facility improvements, so repairs to parking lots, HVAC, aging interiors in Shemeckin's buildings. It also would enhance campus safety, which is really important. So upgrades include better lighting, security cameras, safer parking areas. And then it maintains the current tax rate. So past and major cost property owners. So past major cost property owners point two seven per one thousand dollars of assessed property value, which is the same as the current tax rate. So the current tax rate expires in June of twenty twenty-six. So I'm personally going to vote yes on this because it doesn't raise my taxes. I think it's a huge benefit to our students. And I just wanted to um, just, just talk about it for a few minutes. Uh, because yeah, I really value the partnership we have with Shemekah. So just that was just a tidbit on that. And then tomorrow night, Kim is going to talk until she falls over. So that's at seven PM here again in the library. And so um, yeah, we look forward to showing you uh, all of Kim's really hard work. So that the budget has been, you know, it's been, there's a lot of moving targets this year with federal uncertainty and you know, other things that have happened. And so um, we're really excited to have Kim share what she's been working so hard on. That's, that's it for me tonight, except the next, the next.
You've got the next item too.
Yeah, I do.
Bethany, Bethany's school charter, I mean, contract.
So um, the charter schools are up, their contracts are, oh gosh, did I do that? Um, the charter school contracts are both up this year. This is a sample for you for Bethany Charter School and we have sent this to Kathy Frank, who's their administrator. Um, we sent this to the attorney because it hadn't been updated in a long time. So it was like, I don't know, probably, what do we think, like two thousand fourteen? Yeah, it was updated in twenty, but it, it needed a, it just needed a refresh. So we have Michael Blade at uh, Willamette SD look at it. He's our legal counsel. And so he made some tweaks to it and um, they're not huge. There's um, minor changes. And so we have it in the packet for you to review. And then um, we will have the, the copy ready for you to sign. So this is just basically a discussion item for right now, just to, to give you the draft because it will be on the gym packet as an action item.
I do, I do have something on this. As I was reading it and just going back to the last time they were here, it's just something I'd like to get the board and maybe your guys' opinion on.
Sure.
So, so the very back under H, it was just kind of like a possible concern I have, so how this would play out. So I think they're going to say they have about a million dollars to want to build a gym. But that gym, that property belongs to us.
Correct.
And that was my concern, was that they're going to throw down a mill or more of their own money on our property, which is an asset that we have on our books that belongs to us, even though they spent a lot of money fundraising for it. And that's just a concern that I have. I'm, I'm all for it. I'm just like a roadblock. And I think I've talked to a couple of people, there is some concerns that like, they might see it as, well, they built it and it's, you know, all their hard money and fundraising that they've done in the community. That there might be a little concern of them being told how to use their facility for events, sharing the gym space with our shore teams, when they're kind of wanting to keep it for their community since they fundraised for it. It does raise some concerns for me, how this could possibly play out. And also the oak trees that are there are probably going to have to go down. And I said, we better not turn them into firewood this time. They probably need to slab them out into furniture or sell them and repurpose them in some manner other than firewood. But those are the concerns I had looking at this contract and how it would play out for central problems that I would see.
One question that I have um, is have we offered or had any discussion about them buying the property recently?
I, I did ask them about that. And um, you know, I think that is always an option that we could have, we could approach them with again. Like it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit different to do the evaluation on it because it is actually, it's a county property, it's not actually within the city boundaries. Um, and so I think in its own, you know, if it's, it's its own farm, I believe. And if it's, you know, if it, if it's not a school, it would revert back to farm. So its value is a little bit different than something within the urban growth boundary. So I can, I could approach them again and ask them about that and if you would like me to do that, if that's the direction you'd like me to head. Um, I do think it makes sense. I agree with Josh when they're going to make it, they're going to make this serious investment on a property that they basically, you know, we have the charter agreement with them. But when there's, you know, we don't even have, they don't even pay a lease amount. I mean, that's a whole nother thing. Like they've been using that property for twenty years without paying any, they pay one dollar a year, I think, uh, for a rental fee. Um, so you know, I don't, there's other things to discuss here. So you know, you're free to, to keep asking questions about it. Um, I will, I can approach them if you'd like me to do that about purchasing the property.
And to me, it just makes sense, um, because if they want to build something that's, I don't know. Yeah, it just.
Well, there was, there was another possible option here. And it would have to be, Owen, I think this, you'd be way more knowledgeable about this than me. Actually, you are way more knowledgeable about this than me. Uh, the possibility of giving them the deed with, with uh, language that says if they fail or they fail to meet certain metrics, that it comes back to us. That would give them possible say over their building, less district control. But that was just something as a possibility that was also mentioned in not purchasing. I'm okay, me personally, I know that they pay a dollar, but I also know they're in charge of all their own maintenance. Um, they're in charge of all the utilities, I understand.
Correct, yeah.
So they are taking care of that. So I don't think it costs us necessarily anything by not, I feel like it's kind of been a positive wash, in my opinion.
I mean, Jeff is here, but his team's capacity to manage another property is not, is not good. I mean, they're pretty tapped out. So I mean, I think the, I think the rental arrangement that we have with them where they care for the structures and the buildings and all that, I think that, I think that's fine. But I do agree in some respects that if you add a million dollar building to that property, I mean, when they started using it, it was like it was, right? So they didn't, they maintained it over the years, that this is a significant investment in that piece of property.
Yeah, but they're being the devil's advocate there. Yes, they upkeep, but basically for no rent for twenty years. If there was a reasonable rent on a complex like that for twenty years, it would probably, in aggregate, approach that by now.
Yeah.
And they uh, I seriously doubt, I, I could never speak for them. They'd have to make this decision, but probably they don't have the capital to both buy the property and do the gym. Uh, so.
We could carry a contract on it.
But uh, yeah.
For them.
Yeah, on, on the property. And I, I agree with Jennifer on that, you know, if they want to do a complex like this, it would probably make sense to approach them on, hey, how do you feel about buying the comp, property? And they can do with it whatever they want, but that's just my opinion.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jumped in a little early. Um, to me, it seems like we're thinking about a problem that they should be thinking about. Because you know, to us as the property owner, I mean, I think it would create a political problem if we didn't renew this lease in twenty thirty and we said we're going to sell the building and they put a million dollars on. So there would be that. But you know, from a legal standpoint, I think it should be their concern really to how they're going to secure the long-term um, you know, use of their property, whether they buy it or extend the lease or, or whatever.
It does give you the, the ability as a board to, you know, to tell them whether or not they can proceed with the gym construction. So that is in your purview for the contract.
Right, that, that is. But, but as Owen mentioned, uh, this may seem kind of cold, but it's not our concern. They want to put the money to the building and if we say they can put it on, you know, that's fine. And if things keep going the way they are, if they weren't interested in buying the property, things keep going, they probably just keep leasing it in their increments. But that's a risk on their part, not our part.
Yeah, correct.
So slightly off topic, but still kind of the same thought process. So when they came back or a couple of board meetings uh, previous, they asked, you know, kind of for permission, but we didn't really have much tangible, like, hey, we want to build a gym, but we didn't have a footprint, we didn't have dimensions, we didn't have, you know, they said here's where it's going to go. So I think at some point, hopefully we get that information back since we still are the property owner. And so I think we should have a good understanding of what exactly they're planning on putting on the land.
It says in here the board has to approve it.
So maybe we have them return to the board meeting in June.
With a, with a more well-thought-out proper proposal.
Yeah, I, I think it just.
Maybe July.
Or July.
Because then you have new, new board members.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think this is a worthwhile discussion long-term. I think everyone's happy with Bethany Charter, we want to see them succeed. But just we're, we're trying to make sure they're getting structured to something that succeeds. For instance, and I'm going thinking like, well, hey, you know, ten years from now, after a million dollar building was put on the thing, it's our building. And then if we want to sell it back to them, are, are we going to sell them their million dollar building back? You know, this is, that could be a completely different board. So there's many things to think about and I like what they're doing and I want, and I want them to succeed, so.
It's about like the lo, I want to say the long-term plan, what's your long-term plan? Hey, I don't think there's any hesitancy or, you know, issues with them investing in the property. It's what is the long, what is your long-term intention? You know, because then you can have legal, it could be, you know, you know, optics on it in terms of the community. I think just think a better ironed out, you know, what's your ten-year plan here? Would, would give us a better feeling of what's going to go on in the future.
Yeah, super, yeah.
I will approach them with uh, like their long-range goals and you know, more information about the gym project and where it's going to go. I know they said initially, last time they were here, it would replace the current um, covered structure that was there.
Yeah, but that's, is, footprint isn't near as big as what they were describing.
Right, yeah, yeah, it's going to have.
That's why the oak trees would have to come down to make room for the gym where they want to put it.
Thank you guys for getting back, I appreciate that.
Oak trees are a sensitive subject.
I know, I realize.
Okay, just want to make sure you know that.
Okay. I read the city ordinance.
Okay.
Jeff, want to come on down? Talk to us about facilities maintenance?
Oh, like for you, sure, thank you.
Oh, good afternoon. Just to do a quick facilities report for you. Um, since last time I was here, it's been about six months. We uh, did have one of our custodial team members pass away. Sonya was with us for six years. She worked at Robert Frost most recently. Wonderfully vibrant woman, just incredible person, incredible worker. And uh, we're going to miss her absolutely immensely. So just wanted to remember her, so. Um, on a more upbeat note, uh, we had some unbelievably generous donations recently. A bunch of uh, companies got together. They busted a very big project out in a very short amount of time, uh, in conjunction with the Fox Foundation. So a special thank you to them for all the hard work they did in one week. They took that empty gravel lot and made it something really, really nice for the students. It's uh, nothing but positive comments and reactions from it. Um, they did put the lighting up first and that made a monstrous difference. People felt more safe and secure. Uh, but then putting that pavement down with the striping and reconfiguration, uh, absolute game changer. So a special thank you to those fine folk. We did have our facility condition assessments and our ADA assessments done through Bureau Veritas. They uh, were contracted by the state of Oregon. We're not completely done with them yet. We're really close. We have one this week up at Victor Point for ADA. And then we have yet to have the high school one scheduled for either the facilities condition or the ADA. So once those are complete and we get all the data back, I'll happily share all of that with you. Right now, we're going through a bunch of water testing. The state of Oregon requires us to water test uh, all of our, our public water systems. We have seven, they're all at the outlying schools, they're all well systems. This year, we're up for uh, uh, the VOCs and SOCs for all seven. And so it's a, it's not a huge test, but it takes some time. We have to schedule the appointment, we have to pick up coolers, we have to take all the tests and have them returned the same day. They have to get overnighted. So it takes a little bit of time and preparation for them. So we're getting close to halfway on those.
Are we still having issues with VP with their water?
No, uh, the, the system that was uh, installed for the arsenic's been working really well. We have Shiloh out once a month to monitor that system. So we're, we're in much better shape and we have a better um, response plan for when things do go south. So last time, we kind of got surprised by what, what happened with the system. So we did make some changes and we're monitoring a lot closer, so. The state and EPA have added some additional water tests for us. Uh, they're, they're going to start testing everything for PFOS. They're going to establish a baseline so that we can understand if we have it, how much we have, uh, see what's around the, the other localities and then make a determination on whether we need to, to test more frequently for it or less frequently, hopefully.
Can you explain what PFOS is?
PFOS.
PFOS, um, it's a plastic, it's a, it's a plastic, so I forget what the polyfluor-alkyl something. So it's a, it's a chemical, it's in a lot of plastic uh, wastes, so. Um, I don't have a, a bunch of familiarity with it. I just got the packet from the state last week to start uh, exploring it a little bit more. So, but it is on our, our radar for testing this year. They're not shipping the tests out until August, I believe, so.
So these added tests, this, this comes out of our maintenance budget, right? There's not like grants for these additional tests or?
Uh, not this, not these particular ones. The EPA one was free, they didn't charge us for that. We just had, they shipped us a box, you got three days to send it back. And so it was all free. That was a, that was a nice piece of that. As far as the state testing go, I don't know what they're going to charge, if they were, are going to require any upfront uh, reimbursements or testing fees, I don't, I don't know on that one yet. And then for all seven of those sites, they're, they, they have different regular testing requirements. Every three months is coliform. Every three months at some sites arsenic nitrates, uh, they kind of vary. And then we got to finish uh, our lead-in water testing for three sites. It was, it was started before I got here. We have uh, until June thirtieth, but the, the three sites that are left are all small, so it'll go really quickly. We're doing our summer project planning. We have a fire door, it's the door by the cafeteria, it failed. We're going to have that replaced. We're going to do some parking lot striping at some of our outlying schools, kind of reconfigure, make things a little safer and a little easier for people to park and get around. The pre-K program is moving to Robert Frost. So we're going to move them to Frost and the CTP to the house uh, down Grant Street here. They bought some posts and nets for uh, their soccer team, put behind the soccer goal so that they don't kick the ball into Kermit all day long. Hopefully I'll help them out quite a bit. And then we have a kitchen hood at Robert Frost that needs to be either repaired or replaced. So I'm still working through what, what we can get away with uh, and make it as cheap and functional as possible, so. One big project we have is the seismic rehabilitation up at Silvercrest. Uh, they've already brought storage containers out for us and dumpsters out for us. So the, the team up there's done an excellent job of getting volunteers coordinated. So parents and staff are going to do a really nice job of getting what they need organized and put in the storage containers. And then we're going to come in just before the uh, June second start and pull out all the IT stuff. Some of the heavy lifting items will take care of. And then they're going to start breaking ground on the second of June. Right now, everything's looking great for completion date. It'll give us a week to get everything back in that building. There will be some additional work afterwards, just some touch-up uh, pieces after the twenty-second. But um, we're looking good on budget. Uh, it's, it's all falling pretty, pretty well in line, so. I believe that completes my facility update. Have any questions?
So it'll be basically done before next school year?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yep, substantial completion's August twenty-second, unless they run into something we aren't anticipating. They did find some stuff uh, in some of the exploration. Uh, there's no footings on that building, so the first thing they're going to do is tear, tear and put footings in. So they found that early, it's kind of helped make some adjustments, so. But yeah, we're looking good on that. So, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thanks Jeff, appreciate you.
Jennifer. Jennifer Hannan here?
Ms. Hannan is online with us this evening.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Jennifer, join in.
Can you hear us Jeff? Looks like we're waiting for her to be promoted here shortly. There we go. Daniel, can you run um, the hybrid power point for Ms. Hannan?
Thank you, thank you, sorry about that. Okay, I might, I might kill, I might kill the video if I freeze. I'm up, I'm up in the hills, you know, I'm up in the hills. And I cannot see.
Jen, we can't hear you. It's kind, sounds like he's turning it up maybe. I did too.
I did too.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, okay, if I, if I get, um, if I start to spin, I'll, I'll cut my video and see if that helps. I apologize that I'm online this evening, um, and I cannot see the PowerPoint, so I assume it is up, are you seeing a picture of Silverton High School?
No, now we do, now we do.
Awesome, okay, perfect. Um, so we just wanna talk a bit about the conversations we're having about how to address our declining enrollment issue. I just wanna start by pointing out that we have outstanding comprehensive middle and high school programs here in Silver Falls. And that for most of our students, the best experience and the best academic preparation is gonna be in those comprehensive programs. With our highly qualified teachers and our amazing support staff and services. We'll go to the next slide. Perfect, if you recall before COVID, we were at about a ninety-three percent graduation rate. And we were looking to move that to a hundred percent, so in looking at that seven percent that we weren't graduating. We were looking at a population that had some really complex mental and behavioral health challenges. Um, kids that needed some pretty intensive, complex case management and some kind of unique barriers to engagement. And we started Sequoia Falls Academy, um, and that program is pretty specialized to reengage students with school. To build meaningful connections and to successfully transition students to, to adulthood. Um, those numbers, I, interestingly, from pre-COVID to now, it's, we still run about, it's about that same seven percent. We graduate the last five years, it's been right about ten percent actually of the Silverton High School graduating class, so that number's holding. Pretty steady. If you go to the next slide, post-COVID, however, we do have the decline in enrollment. So, not all of our students have returned, and then unfortunately, uh, many of our students. Who have returned are starting to leave our district. Um, right, we're about, right about a hundred students this year. Who started the year with us and have moved on to other things, and some of them are because they've moved, um, families have moved, those kinds of things. But also, there's a large number that are going to other programs, to charter schools, to onlines. Or registering as homeschool for a variety of reasons, including um, the schedule flexibility, I would say is the one we hear the most. And schedule flexibility, uh, families sometimes have travel opportunities. Uh, we have several students that go to Mexico to, to visit family each year and. When you're gone for four to six weeks out of our comprehensive middle school, high school programs. Um, we end up with a student that, that's significantly behind um, credit wise, so we can't support that learning while they're gone. But also, kids have travel opportunities with their families to other countries, to participate in programs. We had a dancer a while back that had the opportunity to go perform on Broadway, we've had kids train for Olympic teams. Um, so that flexibility and schedule is, is, is a big deal. The learning environment is another one we hear quite a bit, not everybody loves the environment of a public middle school, high school. Um, and that kind of goes hand in hand with parental control, sometimes there are competing um, social norms from at home and. And at school and parents would like to have a little bit more say over what their kids are exposed to and um, what they're taught. How, how it's taught, you know, to support their, their own family values. We do get um, not as much, but a fair amount of student choice as a reason. Of, you know, our programs are, are really well thought out, comprehensive programs over a four year span. And so there's not, you know, we run those over seven periods at this point in a um. Eighteen week schedule in kind of a Monday to Friday day, that, that's what our program is and it is a four year program. We have the um, capability for kids to finish a few months early, but. The state of Oregon allows students to finish at age sixteen if they, if they complete all of the competencies, so we're in a little bit of a competition for that. Um, so we have some decisions to make, I guess, as a district of whether we're going to address this, how we're going to address this. Let's go, uh, next slide. What we could do, what we could do is um, we have been working directly with the ODE. Department of Alternative Pathways to Graduation and the online learning offices. To talk about what a hybrid learning model might look like, most districts have launched some form of an online program. And we could do that, that frankly would be easier and less expensive. But what we know about online programs is they don't work for a broad range of learners. And often, kids will leave us to go to an online program. That doesn't work, there's not enough um, flexibility and support in the online and they come back to us. And that's, that's very hard, not only for the student and family, but for our um, secondary staff as well to have, to have that. Mobility of kids coming in and out. So, looking at a, a hybrid option, um, we would be looking at a menu of options that students would choose from. In six week alternative learn segments. Those would include onsite learning, so kids could take classes um, at the middle school, at the high school. At Sequoia, as there's room and availability to do that. They would have options to do online classes through our online course catalog. And then we would also look at proficiency based learning. And proficiency based learning just means we're identifying a set of academic standards. We're planning with the student what the learning activities will be for that. And then we're going to coach, support, um, and monitor their learning through those standards and then assess their learning. Towards those standards at the end, those can be home based things like um. Independent study projects, self-studies, small group studies, um, research projects, things like that. They can be community based things, our kids in Silver Falls, we really um. They participate in a lot of really cool things, like Northwest Youth Port and Marion County Cadets and Youth Dynamics Oregon and. Uh, they go on missionary trips for sometimes months at a time, a year at a time. Um, that we could be capturing credit for if we were identifying the academic standards, monitoring the learning. Assessing the learning and then assigning the appropriate credit, um, we just are not currently um, set up to do that. In addition to that menu of options for a hybrid learning plan, we would have um. Pretty robust support services, um. The biggest one being that these students would be part of the Fox and Falcon communities. So, they would be able, they would be invited, welcomed to participate in all of the things that our students have access to. Clubs, sports, activities, events, um, special interest groups, et cetera. I think it's important to note that these, these are students that are in our community, you know, they're our kids, so welcoming them into those things. We, we do to some extent with our homeschool families currently, um, but this would be a, a little bit different level of that. Because they would be fully enrolled students. We would be able to offer one-on-one and small group support as well as the academic and career advising. Some onsite specialized workshops. And then virtual and in-person both engagement activities and of course, the mental health support, which we already know how to do pretty well. Um, that's kind of what we're thinking that we would like to do. Um, some things to consider if we're gonna do that. Are that a hybrid is not appropriate for every student. Um, right now, we have kids, you know, leaving us, they can do, they can leave us and go to whatever program they want to go to, we don't have any control over that. But on, for this program, if we're gonna enroll a kid in this program, we want to screen um, for their capacity to be successful. Not um, put them somewhere where we feel like they, where we can't support their success. Another thing to keep in mind is hybrid is not a replacement for our comprehensive high school and middle school programs, it is an alternative to that. So, a, a family can't go into, to a hybrid model education thinking that they're going to get the same experience that they would get in our comprehensive schools. It's, it would not be that, it is definitely an alternative to that. Um, hybrid for us would be ideal for grades seven to eleven, but it's an alternative program. It has flexibility to meet the needs of, of every kid, uh, the lowest we could serve probably is grade six. Um, but we could potentially serve, you know, up through fifth year, sixth year seniors if we needed to. Um, another thing to keep in mind is that if, if we do a hybrid program. We would be seeking to reengage and support the students that are leaving the Silver Falls School District. And that's not because um, because we don't wanna offer it to our current students. What that data tells us is that the students who are thriving in our comprehensive school programs, that's working for them, that, that, that's going well for them. We're really seeking to like, for that twenty-ish percent of kids that it's not working for, how can we support and engage those students? Um, and then the other thing to consider is hybrid is new, it's new for us and it's new for ODE. So, we've had many conversations with both the Alternative Learning Options Office and the Online um, Learning Office. Um, trying to figure out what this could look like because it's not a charter and it's not an online program. And so, there's all kinds of implications about um, how do we document proficiency, how do we issue credit? How do we track attendance, um, how do we do inclusion and, and navigate reduced day legislation? You know, all of those things, it is new for everybody, so ODE is on board and um, happy for us to guinea pig that. And give it our best shot and we're ready to engage in that as well if everybody thinks. You know, that this is, this is the way to go and this is something we should do. Kim, I'm sure you have things to add.
Yeah, I think that, you know, as a superintendent, you know, you're looking for creative ways to um. To, to stop the enrollment decline and, you know, short of encouraging people to have some more kindergarten for us. We gotta figure out some more creative ways to, to embrace our community around us and see if we can, and serve that. See if we can serve that population better, and so we're just trying to look for some creative ways, um, I mean, we could. Other districts have done this, just open an online school and, you know, and have kids enroll in that. But this is a more engaging um. Program that I think would help kids find more joy at school, uh, cause sometimes I think online is, you know. It's a good option for some kids, but I think some kids uh, need more interaction than that. And this would give them some online elective, or online courses, some live electives. And then a support group at, at school to turn to when they need help.
I, I work with kids who have a lot of barriers and this makes a lot of sense to me. Um, so I think if we can make it work financially, I think it makes sense. And that's my question is that, do we add FTE in this situation?
Now, Jen has this structured where her, her team can handle it up to about thirty kids. So, i- if we, if we keep it small at first, we can manage it with, she can manage it within that group. But if it gets much bigger than that, then yes, it does require additional FTE.
My mind was kinda going where Jennifer is, it was going with this, with budgeting kind of, you know, lens. Cause that's, we're very hypersensitive to right now, we wanna offer this program to keep our kids in our district and keep kids engaged. And not having them, you know, um, either go elsewhere and or just drop out of school, we wanna have a, you know, an enriching experience for, for all students, right? Um, so I guess we would, couple of questions, we would obviously keep the head count and keep the funding from the state. If we have these kids engaged in our hybrid or our, or our um, you know, alternative model, number one, I would say that's correct.
Correct.
And then number two, would that model be um, you know, and the average cost to educate a student here in the district? Would that incur more of a cost th- than, than the average cost?
Than normal.
Um, that'd be the other piece.
Yeah, that's, that second part, like, I, I don't think so initially, like if you were kept within that small group. But if you get it, if you got it into bigger numbers, then yeah, it impacts staff at some point, so you have to, you have to think about. You know, do you need an additional section at the high school, you know, of a course, uh, yeah, it would depend on what the bandwidth was, you know. That, and how it grew, so it would be a very structured kind of slow growth process to try and fine tune it. It's, it's an interesting, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of what college kids do now, right? Like they, like, I have an online class right now, uh, through the University of Oregon, like, kids, kids take those classes. Some they take live, some they take online, like it's a mixture of things, they can, you know, and so sometimes that flexibility is really important to the student. And I think we have to start, you know, trying, we're trying to look outside the box and be more creative about what we offer so that we don't. Like we lost like, what was it, four percent now of our student body to online charter?
Online, we're up, yeah.
Yeah, we lost about four percent of our kids to online charter last year.
Well, and I wonder sometimes if those kids stick to the online charter. Because sometimes I look at the kids that are doing that and I'm like, that's not gonna work, you need human connection, so I think this is probably more efficient.
Would bring that.
Yeah, that's exactly why we, we'd wanna do hybrid, I, I'll speak um, to the financial question um, briefly. The way that Sequoia works, we s- we graduate our seniors any minute now. And so, we start in the fall, um, smaller, so we can, we can support hybrid in the fall. Until it gets, until it hits about thirty, as Kim said, then we'll need to, we'll need to level up staff to support that. But over, there's a formula that we had worked out for it that if we, once we hit, it's still pencil, it still pencils out. I, and I can't, I don't know Kim Dowd could speak to when we get to, to her section of, if she remembers off the top of her head. But when, if there's some increment of like when we hit sixty kids, it's a net increase to the district of this much. When we hit ninety kids, it's a net increase of this much, so each student that enrolls in this program, the cost of the program drops a bit. Um, the other advantage is i- if we can keep enrollment up, particularly at these grade levels, then, then it's um. You know, high school success funding and SIA funding and some of the other um, integrated fundings is by student numbers. So, it increases that as well, but in terms of the question, is this a more expensive model, not yet. I mean, we don't, it doesn't exist yet, but we don't think that it will be, on paper it isn't, but again, we haven't run it. So, we don't, we're not exactly sure what we'll run into, obviously, if it's cost prohibitive, we, we, we won't be able to sustain it. So, our goal is that it, that it helps the district financially and, and is not an additional draw on finances.
I have a couple of questions, Jen, how come you said seven through eleven, why not seniors as well, why are they not?
We can serve seniors, but if we're, if we're looking at bringing in kids who maybe. Like if it's a student who's not been engaged, like all of high school, and we have some of those. Then enrolling them at, during their senior year, um, to try to accumulate twenty-four credits is maybe not the best. Is not really setting that kid up for success, it increases enrollment for us, but what does it really do for the kid?
I, so you're talking about enrollment into the program, so I think, I thought, I was assuming we just cut them off their junior year and we're kicking them out?
No.
Oh, no, no, no.
Okay, no, that's what I was like, I'm kinda confused here. Um, and then you're saying the cap on the program right now is estimated to be thirty?
No, we, we, the existing Sequoia staff, we think we can serve thirty in the fall without any additional staff. But once we pass thirty, we'll need to add staff to support them, right, right?
I have that formula that Jen figured out, I can send to you guys as a follow-up if you'd like.
Make my last anecdote on this, and I'm kinda stealing this from somebody else, but it's like, um, I think this is needed. If the focus is on quality education, like the purpose of a school district is not just to have high enrollment. Uh, you know, so I'm thinking like, if this also provides quality students with quality outcomes. I'm all for it, I'm just trying to think how, I mean, actually, I've been advocating this for a long time, to have this, to stop the loss. Cause I feel like we could do this better than most other places with the people we have and especially with you behind it, Jennifer, so. But I guess that's my thing, is this focus is just not, just to keep our enrollment up, it's also that we're educating our students in the best way possible. And I personally feel that this would accomplish that goal for some of our kids, so.
I have a, a question and I don't know if it's been answered yet, but just um, talking about this has been, this would be new to us in ODE. Is the model, like is there another model similar out there where you all went and looked and said, hey, the state's doing this well and they've got it? Or is this completely, where do we get the model that we're looking at implementing from? Or was it just through kind of trial and error? Or was it just through kind of trial and error and conversation, if you could speak to that at all?
And if Frankenstein, they were taking what works from several different programs and put them together. And to some extent, I mean, I'll be honest, like we started having this conversation before COVID, because our homeschool families had come to us and said, hey, we're enrolling in charter programs, like as far away as Roseburg, could our own district provide something for us to support our, our students? We started looking at it then, but as you know, like the world, the world changed. So we did pull that information again. And then exit interviews with our students who are leaving and like, why are they leaving? And what are their needs? But also speaking to Jennifer's point of, hey, some of these students who we can't get through the door of the high school and like, I'm not going to fight you at the high school anymore, so I'm going to go and enroll in an online school. And we know like, that's not going to work, right? Because that's not the best education environment for that kid. That kid's going to need a little bit more support than an online program is going to be able to offer them. So taking all of those things into account and like, what's the best, most supportive education we can provide? And also I, I think, like I appreciate you saying that, Josh, because, Kim, I've had the conversation a few times where I'm like, okay, Kim, like it's not too late. We can just pull the plug and just roll an online program. Because certainly, you know, that is what most people have done. That is the easier option. But it's not best for kids and, you know, these are our kids. And this is our, a lot of kids that are going to remain in our community and it's our ethical responsibility to do the best by them that, that we can.
And I, and I think to add on to that, I think it will be easier for them to graduate in this type of system than it would be in just a strictly online program. I think they'll have more support, more building support, more administrative support. And I think it will just be a higher, I think it's just a higher quality option that would incorporate some of their needs and, you know, lend support from the building.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say that I love the thinking outside the box to solve a problem and to look at something that maybe others aren't doing. And I do think it's a very important point, having the, the support, the contact with people and not just a straight online as far as keeping them engaged. And working at still giving them a quality education, but something that looks a little different and fits their needs. Have you gone far enough down the road yet to figure out how the students would be identified or recruited or whatever for this?
Yeah, so what we're thinking is that as soon as we get your, we will mail a letter to the students who have left us this year and potentially as, as far back as last year, letting them know that we have an option in our resident district and inviting them back. There's a, there's an application. So on the letter, there's a QR code that they can go in and apply. And we'll want to assess that it's an appropriate learning environment for that student. We're not going to, we're not going to enroll them so that our enrollment goes up knowing that it's not, you know, the best situation for a student. But we'll go through that screening process and we'll get them going. And then we'll see where we are with that in terms of numbers and then open it up to other students. I know high school counselors have, you know, they already have a list of students who said, I'm going to finish the year because we're close, but I'm not doing it, I'm not coming back next year. So we'll invite those students if they truly are not, if we can't get them back in, then, you know, we'll invite them as well.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Derek.
Just for clarification, the implementation would be this coming school year? Is that the target?
Yeah, yeah. And we have, I mean, by accident, and once we started having the conversation, we've, we've piloted super unofficially with some kids that have just had some circumstances, like a student who's doing cancer treatment, who cannot be, you know, present, but needs the daily, you know, coaching, support, interaction. We're doing that with that student. We have a student who's caring for a parent during the day, cannot, is not available for school during the day. We're supporting them in that way. So we're, we've been able to play with like, what's, what will work, what doesn't, what platforms, what technology do we need? How many times a day do we need to interact and in what ways, you know? We've gotten to play with that a bit, but we feel pretty ready. We feel ready. I mean, we don't know, we're, we're going to be flying this plane again as we're, as we're building it, but we're building it as we're flying it. So we'll see what comes, but we feel pretty ready to go.
Jennifer, how does this work if it becomes too popular? Like, I'm just thinking like, we're going to have a soft opening, so to speak.
Yeah.
You're, the kids that you've kind of already have an idea of who they are.
Yeah.
If word gets out, well, I want my kid in that. How do you tell them no? And then avoid the like, well, you're not being an inclusive culture. I would like my kid in that program. And I feel that this thing could go perfect with, just super smooth, soft rollout, hard, and then we're kind of the people need to know, no. But I also could think this could be a game changer and then we might grow out of our britches as far as what this program's capable of handling in the first year. Have we, do you think that's a possibility or am I just a mess?
Yeah, no, I think that that has happened. And Derek had asked about other programs we've looked at and there isn't one that we, that we, we have pieces from several, but Redmond Proficiency Academy would be an example of. That is, that is something that happened with them, where they were prepared to serve fifty and they have like two thousand now. So we talked about capping it at one hundred for the first year and then regrouping and seeing like, really, what is our capacity? Where do we stand with it philosophically after we see it run for a year? How do we assess outcomes? Like that's another thing, like we're going to, we don't assess our, our high schoolers necessarily in terms of, when we assess them, they do Sback and OSAS as a junior, but we don't regularly assess their learning. We'll want to be doing that, like we, we will want to track how it's going. And then, I mean, at the end of the year, if it just is like the best thing ever, then, then sure, we can expand the capacity. But I think we want to always be honest about what we can provide and what we can't provide and where the best option and outcomes and academic preparation for each individual student is. And most of the time, that's going to be in a comprehensive middle school or high school program.
I just want to say, Jen, thanks for the innovation and even the way you explained this. You know, going back to the idea that a comprehensive school really is the, the first and best choice for a lot of kids. Just really appreciate it and I really look forward to seeing where this goes.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the presentation. And I'd have to say I was pretty skeptical when the concept first came out, because I think it was, it was just kind of an idea at the time and it was in the context of our enrollment decline. And so when I first heard it, I thought, oh, we're just going to launch an online program to compete with all the other already available online programs so that we can generate revenue. And I wasn't really excited about that. But what I've heard tonight, it sounds like it's really a plan to serve the students in a lot better way. I had one of my kids opted for an online program in her last year and I wasn't very impressed by it. It was probably the right thing for her, but something like this I think would have been much better. So, good job. I'm interested to see how it goes.
We all are. Thank you. I'm sure it'll be, I'm sure it'll be great.
Put us on the cutting edge.
Thanks, Jen.
Thanks, Jen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Tony, update on the policy committee?
Thank you, members of the board. My comments will be really brief. We still have, as you may know, a significant number of policies that we need to work through. And we will, as the legislative session ends in the next month, we will get ready for a whole series of other policies to deal with. To get through these in a timely manner, Debbie and I are currently working to set up a regularly scheduled monthly policy meetings. Right now, we're looking at in the week between when we have our regular board meeting and, and the work session meetings that we have. Now to, also to assist with the backlog of policies, I will bring those policies that either have changes that are just those required by law or with what we call minimal discretionary options directly to the board as a way to help speed through that process, especially since there's, they're very minimal changes that, that we would be able to provide to them. This will allow the policy committee to really focus on those policies that either have some significant discretionary changes or optional changes that we would want to discuss that are most applicable to our unique context here in Silver Falls. Or those types of policies that may have the potential for either controversy or conflict. And in just a bit, I will review a, a few of the required policies as an example of what I, I mean by bringing certain policies directly to you. And since we have a three-review process, I think those types of policies are more apt and able to be brought through in this manner. Any questions I can answer on that for you?
Very well explained.
Thank you.
Okay, Kim, financial report and enrollment. I'll just let you roll one into the other.
Exactly. Well, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to share our latest financial reports with you as well as enrollment changes. I had actually not necessarily planned on presenting tonight, but I am going to try to real quick, see if I could get sharing turned on on my presentation so that I could pop this up on my screen. Thank you, Daniel. Appreciate that. And so to, to walk through a couple of the significant changes for you in our board report that you have tonight. I am, there we go, it's going to update, I believe. There we are. So on our revenues tonight, one of the significant changes that you're going to see, I've kind of zoomed in here. I know it's still very, very small. These reports are getting very tight as we're trying to give lots of detail. So I highly recommend the PDF versions. But this is our first page of our financial statement for, as of May, May the fourth. And showing though, that within our state school fund formula sources, the right column there, we are projecting that we're going to end the year with about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in state school fund revenue above what was projected. So this is, you can see primarily from the line three one zero one, which is the code for state school funds. Those are projected to actually come in higher. There were a couple of changes. We got a positive adjustment on last year's state school fund that was excellent in there as well as turned out that some of the projections we've been seeing all year from other districts saying their enrollment had increased, wasn't exactly accurate. So as enrollment decreased statewide, our, our funding per student went up a little bit. So it's, it's constantly that give and take. We are projecting that our property tax revenue might come in a little bit under budget. But as I've explained in the past, there's kind of a push and a pull that actually increased our state school fund revenue as well. So again, expecting about three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars to the positive on revenue that makes up our state school fund. What that also means, then we have our non-state school fund revenue sources. The, those, those items are kind of across the board on our, our local sources. We're showing about a hundred and ninety-four thousand to the positive there. A little extra on our intermediate sources and that is due to what is, here is number twenty-one oh two, our education service district apportionment. Those are the funds that our Willamette Education Service District has earmarked for the district. Some of it is spent with the Willamette SD purchasing services and then what we don't purchase through them is passed through to us as dollars. So as our menu of services we purchased with them might adjust, that number adjusts a little bit as well. And then unfortunately, our state and federal sources, we've talked about this section quite a bit. This is projected to come in six hundred and ten thousand dollars under budget and is driven by the high cost disability repayment as well as our adjustment to not receive an overpayment this year and try to get in line. Yes, Josh?
I'm looking, this is the only question I have regarding this topic. Thirty-two ninety-nine.
Yep.
In the book says something different, other restricted grants and aid. Is that a different descriptor for high cost disability in the budget?
It is. I have, this report, I have tried to make a little bit more public friendly to help people be able to identify some of the terms that we use. The budget document that you receive has descriptors that are defined by the State of Oregon Chart of Accounts. So there are some, some, some variances on that. And yes, I, yeah, I apologize for any confusion that caused. The numbers themselves are definitely consistent.
I really appreciate it. It actually helps me to look at how you do it, to understand what these are. So I just, that clarifying question has helped me a ton. So thank you very much.
So what, what this shows though is down here towards the bottom, our total revenues for the year are going to come in forty-four thousand dollars under budget. That is eight one-hundredths of one percent off of what we budgeted. So very pleased with that. Those are revenues that are coming in the door. However, because we also budgeted only a million dollar, and I shouldn't say only, but we budgeted a one million dollar beginning fund balance because of the volatility, when we approved this budget last June, really not knowing what, what that number was going to be, our beginning fund balance actually came in six hundred and eighty-five thousand higher, which is, while not revenue, it is a resource for operations. It is a financial resource. So we are going to be ending the year six hundred and forty-one thousand dollars to the positive on the revenue side. So I show you that because, and I apologize, I realize that doing this PDF share is a bit unique on Zoom. I'll give it a second to update. Oh, this is not pleasant. So I will try to read some of these. I apologize that it, this is the page that gets the microscope out. But these are the expenditures and this is page two of your financial report on Board Book. And what I want to point out is that within our instruction appropriation, this first section is the functions of our operations that are directly instructing the students. Now lots of operations work with students, but there is a difference between instruction of students and the support of the instruction of students. So in this bucket, we are actually projecting that our expenditures are going to come in approximately eight hundred and seventy-five thousand under budget. And in looking at that, the majority of that is due to the significant reduction in what is known as extra duty. Those are time cards that are sent in for things above and beyond salaried workdays or overtime for things. This also is due to significant, significant efforts by all of our schools to curb spending. And our, our schools have what are known as discretionary budgets. They have been extremely mindful of the district's financial standpoint. A lot of them, you know, had realized, you know, our, our stock room was actually very well stocked and we were able to get through, you know, and so, you know, those are, those are things that are actually causing this number to come in significantly under the budgeted expenditures. Our support service section, which is going to include our office staff, our secretaries, our social workers, our nursing, our psychologists, a lot of positions that while not instruction, they are critical to instruction. Instruction could not happen without these, these services. We are projecting those to come in just seventy-two thousand dollars under budget, but still right in line with that. The reason I'm sharing this is that we are sharing with you tonight a proposed expenditure on a line down here at the bottom that is called transfers of funds. And what that is, is this is a line item for an, an expense in which the general fund transfers money to support other funds. You're most familiar with this in terms of our food service account. We had budgeted very conservatively what was required to take care of our food service account, what was required to take care of some debt obligations that the general fund supports every year. And because of those expenditure savings in those other areas, we are proposing, and I'm sharing this with you tonight because it very closely ties into the budget we are proposing tomorrow night. We are proposing that we would like to come to you with a supplemental budget, requesting authority to spend another six hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars on that line, transferring the spending authority that was in the instructional piece, transferring it to this, this inter-fund transfer to completely eliminate all of the multi-year, basically negative balances that we have talked about. We had shared with you that we were unable in twenty-three, twenty-four to completely cover the entire food service debt. We started the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year with two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars of food service debt. We are projecting, of course, an additional negative, you know, balance again this year. So between those, we also So, between those, we also talked about multiple years in which Medicaid expenses had not been fully covered by the Medicaid reimbursements, that is outstanding as well. So, between taking care of the food service fund completely, to get it to a zero balance as of July 1, 2025, to get the multi-year Medicaid debt to a zero balance, to get the facility rental debt that we've talked about in the past, where our facility rental fees were not covering the cost of those services, we are talking a four-to-five-year build of unfortunately debts that we could not fully cover last year. We are proposing that we would bring a supplemental budget to the June 9th board meeting, that would allow us to transfer the spending authority that the board has provided within instruction to apply to those debts, and have Silver Falls walk in July 1, 2025, having completely cleared the books, short of, I need to be very clear, short of long-term bonds, we're not talking parts bonds, we're not talking the Silverton High School bond, but taking care of every last piece that Jackie Olson pointed out to us as part of our ongoing issues. While it's very difficult to see that number, I feel personally strongly that this is the final step to the solid foundation that this district absolutely needs, and even with that authority, if approved through the supplemental budget that we are going to present to you, even if the transfer is approved, I am currently projecting that with that additional expense, I apologize for, that we could end 2425 with $2.1 million ending fund balance, which is incredible. I know it's not where we need to be, it's not within board policy, but to completely have Silver Falls have a fresh start, July 1, 2025, food service operations coming in-house, and the chance to turn that around, and to completely take a district who was told they were $10 million in debt a year ago, and to have all that debt gone, and start next year with $2.1 million, and then, when you see tomorrow night's budget, with what you'll see proposed for the ending fund balance for a year from now, it's almost emotional, right, after what we've all been through, so, just wanted to share that that is, that was the key pieces I wanted to share in this report tonight, so.
Kim, can I ask you, because it makes total sense to me to make this transfer and clean up the books, but I'm wondering if you know, why wasn't it done in the past, and if there is an argument against it?
That's a great question.
So, it is very hard to, when ending fund balances were, I cannot speculate to why it was not done in the past, I honestly can't, but it, I will say it is very hard to not meet your goals, if you projected an ending fund balance of X, and let's say our 2324 ending fund balance was projected $2 million, and it came in at $738,000, if those had been paid off, it would have been zero, right? I mean, it's, but I, you know, the money was not there to take care of it, I will just be perfectly honest, we have had, you know, some cash flow shortfalls, I can't speculate to why, but these are some of the pieces that unfortunately I just believe had not been addressed when they were small problems, and it's these types of things when you think, I'll dust that shelf tomorrow, well, tomorrow it's dustier, and the next day it's dustier, and why I didn't dust it today, I can't answer, or why my former, you know, house cleaner didn't dust it yesterday, you know, I just, I'm not going to speculate, I know that our, you know, there were a lot of, a lot of things to deal with, there's a lot of competing priorities in our classrooms, and we are trying to focus on students, absolutely, but we also have to be absolutely mindful of our commitment to make sure that all of the corners and nooks are getting dusted.
And I'm in full support of, Kim and I have talked at great length about this, Tony and Brandon, I mean, we all think this is a, you know, a really solid plan, because what it does is that it takes care of that past debt that was just kicked down the road when it shouldn't have been, and it's time to just, it's time to be aboveboard and transparent and really work towards fiscal responsibility, and I think this is a really good step.
Yeah, I just think it's the transparency piece, it's way easier for the public to be able to see what's going on when it starts at a zero balance.
And I will be perfectly honest, in January, our auditor said, you will take care of that in fiscal year '25, so, when the auditor tells you to do something, you want to do it, right, I do, I mean, I, that's a, that's a very important piece to me. The community deserves to know that we have scoured every little nook and cranny, and that we are, we are ready to absolutely just propel Silver Falls forward, there's plenty of opportunities and plenty of maybe challenges that are going to come along, and to not, not have a train, you know, behind us, that's, you know, really kind of steering us, I just, this is ultimately going to be a board decision when we present a supplemental budget to you, but I needed to be able to show this on here, because the budget tomorrow night is not going to show negative beginning fund balances in those funds, it's not going to show, you know, you know, those pieces, so, this will be a board decision, because that debt could be carried forward, and this ending fund balance could be increased by not paying that debt off.
Right. So, your, our budget tomorrow is made, assuming that we adopt this, is that correct?
It's all interrelated, it's very difficult to.
So, I recall the last two audits have requested we take care of these negative fund balances, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
I remember, it's encouraging to me that we're following their instructions, I do want to piggyback off what Owen said, I don't know if we've made the case of why not to do it, or in less amount, is paying this off, if we do it, hindering some of our instructional educational add-backs, IAAs, FTEs, so instead of paying back the full amount, what if we paid five, I'm just.
Yeah, absolutely, I hear what you're saying, yeah. It is decreasing your ending fund balance, which is decreasing your resources, however, we have to be very conscious that your books can't show a negative ending fund balance, what is happening is the way the state budget law is built, is they say fund, and we're kind of getting into the weeds, but your funds, our parent funds, and our, what we call our special revenue funds, which are 200s, all our grants live there, our food service lives there, our student body funds live there, overall, that fund is positive, because there's cash, positive cash balances in enough other places that are creating that fund to have a positive balance. When we really look down at how we break out, our account numbers are 20 digits long, every account number is 20 digits long, we have 40,000 account numbers that we balance, actually, we're up to about 46,000, but, we have 46,000 accounts, each 20 digits long, and the way those digits are built, there are actually sub-accounts, sub-funds within those 200s, and that's exactly what our auditor said, is while the parent fund shows a positive balance, there are sub-funds and subprograms within those funds that are carrying negative balances and need to be resolved, and that has been, you are correct, a multi-year audit comment, has not been a finding surprisingly to me, but it's because within state budget law, we are in compliance.
And I think when you, when you see Kim's presentation tomorrow night, like, she has a really great graph that shows like what our staffing levels and what our student levels were in 2012, and, so our student level now is similar to what it was in the 11, 12 school year, it's almost identical kid-wise, and we have about 25 more staff members, so we still have more, a few more staff members than we had at this past student level. And while that's, I mean, we did an adjustment last year in, in an expediated way, like, so that was done quickly, and, you know, to reduce staff and to become, you know, fiscally solvent, but I think that there are some adjustments that need to happen a little bit to that, but I think it shows that we're, we're in the right area. I don't think, I think thinking that we need to add back a lot of staff is probably not, not necessarily accurate, although I think student needs are higher than they were in 11, 12. So it's like, it's like this really complicated formula, like, how many staff members can we support that support the kids, that isn't too much, because like, I think in the past three to five years, you've seen staffing levels that are too high, because they don't match your student enrollment.
Right, exactly.
This, this action seems to be very prudent, in my opinion, you know, this is, this is going to be the correction kind of year, and, you know, to, kind of coming out and going springboarding into the next one, this, to me, it just makes good sense, especially with the recommendation of the auditor to take care of this, that we take care of this, and we get rid of anything that may hinder us in the future, because when I look at this, if I'm right, we were predicting, the goal was a million-dollar ending fund balance, right, when we set forth a year ago.
That was our beginning fund balance projection, but yes, our goal for the end of this year was still, yeah.
Was a million, and we're going to end at 2.136, not where we need to be, not per board policy, not where we should be, but that's more than double what we predicted.
And that's with getting everything to zero.
Exactly, and that's with getting everything to zero, so, yes, it makes great sense, get everything cleaned up, and let's springboard off the $2 million.
And that will be up for the board's decision, there is a formal process to a supplemental budget, it does require some public notices, there will be newspaper prints about that, so, but because this is part of building next year's budget, I had to have this report accurately reflect that we are going to be requesting that increase in appropriations to allow us to transfer your authority to spend in one appropriation of instruction, and giving us that authority to spend a portion of that, not all of that savings, but a portion of that into another piece. You know, I think it's really important to point out on here, you know, this beginning fund balance you see right in the middle of your screen, the $1.6 million, that was our balance July 1 of 2024, after we deposited a $3.9 million TAM.
Right.
That's how, that is.
So to end this year at $2.1 million, when really, that number was a negative 2.3, makes me kind of sick, right? The comeback of Silver Falls financially, I, Kim and Tony are presenting at a conference next week, I was supposed to, next month, yes, I was supposed to present at one last week, but unfortunately, the budget worked, kind of, I had to excuse myself, but provided them some feedback, because people are looking at Silver Falls of, how did you do that? And it's, it was done because of our staff, and what our, what our staff have done in the field, what our staff are doing in the district office, what our staff are doing in our facilities, it was not done by any one action at all, it was, everybody came together and said, you know what, we're going to do this, we're going to fix it, and that's what we're bringing to you as the last, the last.
Yes, yeah, our community stepped up and supplemented some things, leadership, you guys made, helped make some fabulous decisions and to get us here, our staff being frugal with, you know, getting by with the best they can, and everything, and it, it's kind of miraculous, I mean, we're not anywhere near out of the woods yet, but, but it's, it's very commendable.
Well, thank you all for the opportunity to share, share that with you, I apologize for some of the, you know, wasn't prepared for the sharing, but I thought it was important to have that up, so that it could be demonstrated a little more clearly, hopefully.
It's okay, we could follow along, that's good.
And we have the enrollment there, anything, I didn't see anything particularly.
Very minor enrollment, we had a shift of one, you know, just a reduction of one, this time of year, we don't see a lot of movement, we see our really, you can tell by the 2425, you know, enrollment graph, that we see, of course, the huge change right at the start of the year, is our 10-day drops, we find out who did not return for the school year, the chart there on the bottom left, and then, of course, at the change in semesters, we do see some early graduates exit the system, so I do anticipate our enrollment to stay fairly static throughout the remainder of this year, let's hope so, and would love to see maybe some return of some students next year through our hybrid program, and...
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got some question for the Kims, on the enrollment, you know, do we know the kids who have disenrolled, or is it at the high school level, is it the kindergarten level, where, what, is it throughout, is it equally throughout?
Pretty well crossed.
Yeah, so if you, you know, if we look at in the totals column of the June 2024 column next to the current, you know, you are going to see that Silverton High School, you know, has some change, but honestly, if you look at it, we're seeing it in a lot of different buckets, we are, you know, it's, you know, you know, it's a little, it's a little bit all over the place, and so, you know, identifying, you know, we spend a lot of time looking at, are they going to homeschool, are they going to online options, and, and, you know, how do we meet, as Jen very clearly articulated, how do we meet those needs?
The reason I ask, and maybe I'm misinterpreting the data or something, but when I look at like, at the amount of kids in each grade level, so like at the high school, 9, 10, 11, 12, you look at, you know, 308, 312, 290, 310, average amount about 305 per grade.
Yep.
Go down to the, go down to the kindergarten and the first grade enrollment, 231 and 245, if that trend carries through, that's huge.
So Tom, you have nailed our biggest concern that we have conversations about, is the trend lines are extremely concerning, I found when I was going through my budget presentation update, you know, and modifying it for this year, that we built our trend data for the 2425 school year, we used that 245 number to project our kindergarten, we're at 231, so we, you know, we were hoping to remain static, so, you know, in budget presentation tomorrow night, we'll share, you know, again, that we're hoping, you know, for some things, but we've got to find a way to reverse that trend line. Kim Kelson very, very wisely, you know, authorized expense that we didn't necessarily plan on this year, but is critical to Silver Falls, and we have commissioned a company to do a population, a 10-year population study, we have to know, Portland State was booked out about a year, so, the gentleman from Portland State that did our last one actually is with another firm who now does it, and, so, actually, it's the same gentleman that did our study 10 years ago, and it's amazing to look at what they projected, because they were spot on. Now, they do a low, medium, high projection, we are on the low, they could not have predicted COVID, of course.
Is it, is it perhaps, am I, are those high school numbers bumped up by transfers in from other districts?
Possibly, we do see.
We've always been a net inflow, and it always shows there a loss.
After eighth grade, we do see especially a lot of homeschool families, they may be comfortable doing it up to a certain level, but maybe at the junior high level or at the high school level, they will introduce into the public school system, we do see some, some transfers as well, but overall, the data, the demographic data for Oregon shows that that birth rate is part of it, it shows that choice is part of it, I saw an extremely scary graph, I don't have it up in front of me, but it showed by state, how much they think each state's public school enrollment is going to drop by 2045 or something like that, and it, it was horrible, it's like 18% for Oregon statewide.
Be interesting, it'll be interesting discussions for the long-range, next long-range facilities, because that's, this is huge.
So you must have a population study, you must have that, one of the concerns here is housing pricing.
Yep.
We've got a, you know, a neighborhood going in just right up the street, and those are not starter home prices, right, that is, that is very concerning, so, you know, where can families afford to live in this community, they have school-aged children?
You know, so much of the, of the enrollment decline was kind of passed off on to people disenrolling and doing other things, when no, they're just not having babies either, that's probably the bigger factor.
Families are smaller, the census data proves that, families are just, are definitely smaller, but there are multiple pieces, and so having that data is going to be absolutely critical for Silver Falls to plan, enrollment, financials, facilities, all of those pieces, all are impacted by, by our student population.
Okay. No, we need to move, Phil, this last thing.
Okay, because we need to keep moving here.
I know, I know, but I'm such a negative Nancy, I just got to say this, tonight's meeting has probably been one of my favorite ones I've ever had, and I, the hybrid program, the money being right for the first time, the future's bright, it's looking bright, it makes me super proud to be at Fox tonight, so, I just, I'm sort of tired of being negative, and I just feel super optimistic tonight, so this was fantastic.
Appreciate that, Josh.
Thank you. Tony, calendar.
All right, thank you, members of the board, this evening I have for you an actual action item on the calendar, you may recall that at the last meeting, I shared with you the work of the calendar committee, which included licensed staff, classified staff, administrative staff, and as I review the updates, and send, Daniel, if you can pull up the action item itself for me, I'd appreciate that. And as I, um, review the updates, and send, Daniel, if you can pull up the act- the action item itself for me, I'd appreciate that. So while he's doing that, I will say that, you may recall that under the, uh, originally proposed calendar, we would have a start date of September second for students, and then an end date of June eleventh. However, the, the unique feat- feature of that calendar was that we would have six half day early releases, and then, uh, five one hour early releases. The six half days were to really provide sustained professional development work, uh, and, uh, one hour releases were a discussion that happened regarding the ability for at least the secondary staff to be able to have some time to do some data analysis work or PLCs, there's a lot of different ways they may look. Um, since that time, what we did is we, we've gotten out some comment, we've received about thirty eight comments. Um, granted, about three quarter of them were from our staff members. However, one thing that was common was, uh, there was a concern about having some of their early release days being half day, while others were, while only one hour. Uh, the concerns centered around confusion for parents and the possibility of impact on instruction. Now, the staff concerns, uh, still continue to be a lot about the time, the lack of time for data analysis. And that was, again, primarily at the secondary level, where we see that as a concern. And the elementary level wasn't as much of a factor, because elementary, the way their days are scheduled, and their grade level configurations or whatnot, there's a little bit more opportunity for them to have some of those meetings at the schools, particularly the, the K five schools. And if you look at the, the smaller schools, the K eight schools, their data analysis isn't as much of a deal from what we traditionally see, because they may only have one teacher that's covering multiple grades. That data analysis works when you really have multiple teachers at the same grade level, and you're hoping they all get on the same page, right? So that, we didn't see that necessarily, that same consideration there. So Daniel, now if you can pull up the actual calendar itself. Um, so in interim, after receiving those cons- those, uh, comments, Superintendent Kelson and I worked, and we, we talked with the administrative team, and what we're, uh, proposing for you then is a calendar with the same start and end dates. However, we will move instead of having the six half days, to having the three full days. Um, and I'll, I'll get to the data analysis question in a minute, but the three full days will result in there being twenty four hours of professional development time. Recall that right now, when we have thirty four days of one hour release time, there's another day in there, but really, effectively, it's thirty four days that we have one hour releases. So you can right there do the math, that this calendar has ten more hours of seat time, even though it has less days, and that's because right now, all those days that we had with, uh, one hour days, uh, one hour less, they still count as instructional days, okay? So it can be that you have actually fewer instructional days, but actually have more instructional minutes. And some states have, would be a challenge, because some states have it, they judge on the number of days you have. Oregon's about the number of instructional minutes. So this calendar, though it has a few less instructional days, actually has more instructional minutes, okay? So that's what you see in front of you there. The dates that we picked, those are the dates that are green that show up there. Uh, we heavy loaded them in the first two months of school, because those PD dates will still be focused on implementing what will be an updated literacy curriculum. So to have a date in Oc- in, in September, and then one again in October, really helps solidify that early entry into this new curriculum. And then there will be a date, the next date really opens up our second semester, and that'll be a February second date that you'll see there. So that will provide us an opportunity then to come together with the staff, after we've had a, a full semester, to implement these changes, and then to review it. So that's what you see in front of you, the, pretty much the other little, you know, geometric figures you see on there are all dates that are very similar to what we're seeing this year, in terms of some of the mandated dates, the dates where we see that are non-staffed dates, some of those days are the grading days that we have always had, uh, parent conference days that we've had. Uh, so really, the changes are what I've discussed at this point. Now, the last comment I would make is there's still, you'll notice, this still doesn't necessarily address the data, uh, question, the analysis question. Uh, Superintendent Kelson and I had the opportunity to discuss this with a little bit with the union, uh, and also then with the high school staff. And right now, what the high school staff is doing is they're discussing with transportation, and they're looking at the internal scheduling of their workday, of their school day, uh, to consider how best to configure that school day, so that way there could be some time. Uh, there's no guarantees yet, we were very clear that right now, because of the factors that are considered, there were no guarantees to anybody about this, but they are working to look to see how they might be able to provide some of that time for this year. Uh, recall that the big factor with, uh, with, uh, trying to provide that time, that makes it a challenge, is that currently the way the high school day is scheduled, is that really you have about twenty minutes in the front end of the day, and twenty minutes in the back end of the day to try to make it work. So the thought that you could have worked the schedule, and then allow maybe, say, staff to go home, you know, uh, for a few days of the week, at the same time the students go home. The problem is, when you look at trying to navigate to, or manipulate twenty minutes here and there, it's a little challenging. You'd basically be letting your, your teachers out every day of the week. So we know that to make this work, we're gonna have to look at some flexibility, and how maybe we start the day and end the day, to be able to provide enough block of time, where that way making a flexible change is meaningful and impactful, okay? So some of that is, of course, having to look at then, how does changing the actual start minute by even five, ten minutes, um, though it doesn't really have a net effect really much on the end, on the overall instructional minutes, it'd be a minor effect, it'd still be within what we're talking about, in terms of the amount of time we're spending now out of seat time. But see, that requires us to have discussions with transportation, because you know, when you have bus routes happening, all that comes into play. Luckily, so far, it looks like it wouldn't require wholesale changes. You know, um, like when you do a significant change in start times and end times, you often see anywhere from a quarter to a third increase in the number of routes you have to do. We're not seeing that right now, but it, there'll still be some adjustments that would need to be made. We'll come to you later with that, but that's really more a in, in school adjustment to their schedule, it's not really a calendar piece. So that's what we have in front of you. I'd be happy to take some questions, uh, and again, this will, we've asked this later in the agenda for you to adopt it. Our parents are at the point now where they, this could have been done in, best cases, in March.
Right.
In the worst case, we normally, we would have this done in April, but, you know, we, we know this has not been the average year for us. So that's what we have in front of you tonight.
Well, I'd like to say that I, the changes I've seen this stuff, I think it makes it much better for students, for continuity of learning. I think it's much better for families as far as their planning and, and being able to, and, uh, each individual building, it looks to me like it cuts down on the variance of different schedules they'd have to balance around, and which, in the end, can be helpful when it comes to our people that we share from buildings and all that sort of thing, so. So I, uh, I like the, I like the thinking, again, outside the box and getting solutions to the, the problem, and, uh, and most of all, like I said, I think it's better continuity for the students, so.
Yes, and thank you, uh, Phil, and with the three day schedule, one thing that, uh, I was clear about, even when we had negotiations, talking about, and with the calendar committee, um, we said, if you're only gonna have three days, it's gonna be very important that people are there in those three days. So I was clear that, um, I'm not gonna be looking at personal days.
Yeah.
You know, on those days. Now, we can't do things about, we can't do really anything about people calling it sick.
Yeah.
Unless, you know, I see a trend or a pattern, right? But, but, uh, I, I, I mentioned that going to the three days, we're gonna need people there. All hands on deck, because remember, a calendar is only as good as the instruction you're providing, right? And we made it very clear all this year, that one of the things we need to work with is on the early literacy. So that, that's an important piece to, to be very clear for our parents, for our staff, for the board, to understand that these things all, they don't happen in back, they all come together.
I'd like to think our staff will be there, even if it's a Monday.
I think limiting it to three is really gonna help that, and, um, also the, the focus, I mean, people are gonna wanna know the new curriculum, right? So the, the people at the elementary level are, are gonna really appreciate that. Um, I was watching negotiations for Woodburn School District just a couple days ago, and we have like way more of these full days, when we, and we used to have late start, Wednesday late starts. And, um, I don't think we should have ever changed them personally, because I do like that, um, the time that you have to look at the data analysis, I think that's really important. But I do see your point about the early literacy stuff as well, but, um, the director of, of personnel made a statement about how people miss on those, on those days. So, um, yeah, I, I think in this case, because they're at the beginning, they have purpose, um, and I think the challenge will probably be middle school and high school making the, uh, day purposeful. And if you make it purposeful, I think that's when people come, and if it doesn't look purposeful, people are gonna say, well, I'd rather have my sick day, if I have to make an appointment, I'd rather not take time away from the kids, right? I'd rather do it on this day of, of PD, and I, I, I get, I get that, you know? But if it's really relevant, then they'll show up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, um, Kim and I have been talking a lot about that literacy, while there would be a heavy focus on the elementary level, there is a lot of research, and there's a lot of things you can still do at the middle and high school level regarding academic language.
Oh, for sure.
You know, and we have a lot of our students, the data will show you that, at the middle and high school, that teachers could still benefit having some, even if it's just refresher on techniques about engaging your students, your adolescent and older students in reading. Because bottom line is, when all of us went to school to teach, we all have to realize at the beginning that we're all reading teachers.
Mm-hmm.
No matter what subject we're teaching, right?
Yep.
Because literacy in a subject, that's really applied knowledge, right? So, uh, it all comes, again, and all, all this comes together.
Yeah, that academic language bit, give them that, that's great, that's, that's fantastic, so good.
Hey, thank you, moving on. Second reads, did anyone have, these second reads, hopefully down in action items, we'll adopt, did anyone have any questions beyond what they had last time around on any of them? I think instead of just going each one at a time, just, there's one in order there that.
No, I don't recall anybody emailing us.
Yep, no one, and we didn't hear anything, and so, okay, we will, unless there's an objection, we'll move on to our first reads. And Tony, could you talk us through the tie points of each of these on first reads, what we need to know?
I, I've tried to.
Read them, but as far as.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and I have, uh, I've created some notes for myself to read, to try to keep down no more than four specific points on those.
Okay.
So, the first one is expression of, uh, milk and breastfeeding. This, again, is a required policy, it's pretty much a state mandate. The big changes that you'll see on this one is that, um, from what we had in previously, it makes it clear that this is about expression of milk and breastfeeding. Um, you know, some, sometimes just words matter. Um, we're making sure that notice goes to the supervisor. So, you know, eh, there is a responsibility for the employee to notify their supervisor that, of this need to do the, to express milk or breastfeed. Um, it also, uh, this policy will also make sure that breastfeeding and expression of milk is also to the degree feasible is tied to the break and, and lunch periods, the normal rest periods. Uh, that was a little bit more flexible from the past, where in the past, there's a little more strict language in the law about that you could actually mandate it was during, uh, rest and lunch period. Now it's a little bit more about being it feasible, okay? Which I think, personally, I think that's an important change. Um, and the last part on this is that, we will, by the time you get to the formal adoption, we actually now, under law, have to list within the policy, the specific locations in the buildings, right? So that's why I already kinda have the framework here, where it shows the different buildings, the district office and maintenance.
So when we get the final policy to adopt, do we have that in?
Say, like, you know, it, it doesn't have to get to the level like the specific room number, but it has to say, is it a particular office? Is it a particular classroom or whatnot? So that'll all be updated for you.
Okay.
That's really the changes in this policy.
So I do have questions on this one, because language does matter. Do, do we have to adopt all this language? We already had the policy, but they're saying, when you say sample policy is required, you know, this one, I'm looking at the ORSs where it says we have to use such language, I'm not seeing it, so.
Well, I, I have this policy in here, but you remember, your policy is your implementation of laws, and some of this that we have in here is because it will allow us to really implement that. People getting the appropriate notice and what we're expecting, for administrators to understand the requirements that are, that are, we need to make sure we're putting in place and enforcing. So when I, as I review this work, there are still things in law. Now, are there some of these areas that we could have said, no, we don't put in policy? It's still law that's required. You'll see in the next policy I review, where I actually have removed some of those provisions, because it just is redundant to actual statutory law. So, and my read of this work is that these are, these, this is the degree of provisions that I think are gonna be good for the employees to be able to reference as their opportunities and their, and, you know, also a little bit of responsibility. And I think it will give the right guidance to the administrative staff, in making sure that these provisions are, the legal provisions are followed.
Legal via language or the policy itself?
Both, both.
Josh.
Because every law has to be, you know, informed and guided by policy. Policy ends up translating what laws to an effectual purpose.
I just wonder, and I don't wanna put words in your mouth, are you wondering concerning like whether or not we need to remove the word mother from the policy?
I am.
So specifically, are we required to remove the word mother from the policy by the law?
Or friendly?
Um, the law states that, it's, you know, Oregon law is a little bit more expansive, just like what we heard in negotiations earlier, where there's a different definition of the traditional family that we put in place. Ultimately, I'd say, we can decide if we want in policy to not say the word, to not include that word, okay? Um, it wouldn't change the effective law, okay?
So I guess my, my issue is, it's like we, if we're gonna add it, well, it's already there, we're purposely removing it, and I'm seeing it. So it's not that we're adding it, it's already there, we're excluding it.
Yeah.
So that was my question about legal about language, when I see some of these policies, I understand the ORSs and some of the stuff, but this is a choice. So I am just concerned about said verbiage.
Okay. Other questions I could answer on that one? Okay. The next one we have is actually both the policy and the administrative regulation, and this is regarding criminal records check and fingerprinting. So in this one, um, a lot of the changes in, in the policy itself are really, as I shared with you before, sometimes, um, OSBA gets a new lawyer, and then they kinda, each one takes a different look at how the actual wording looks in this. Um, some of the things though that you'll see in this policy is that, um, they mentioned that you can make the policy a lot longer by including the specific language that T S B C uses on rules for teachers. You don't need that, again, you know, because one, that's not the language I use in determining when I hire somebody, other than extend, the, the simple rule, which is that if they've been licensed by T S B C continuous, and don't, haven't had a break in three years or more, then you can rely on that background check they had before. So we, in that case, you don't need to have all that extra language. That's why there's a section on it where I actually, you know, remove that, and in this case, it really is optional. They make it very clear that that's optional language. The other changes in this one regard, regarding, um, who pays, it doesn't change our current practice, but it is, it is something we have to make sure is very clear in this. So when we have employee, new employees, we do expect them to pay for their background checks. They can request that, it gets deducted from their first check. That's different from volunteers. Volunteers, they're doing this work out of their own graciousness to help us, we cover the background checks on that, okay? So that's, that's one of the provisions of this policy. Um, employees, unlike, the one difference is that employees, unlike volunteers and contractors, employees, we have the ability to have more direct control and daily oversight of those employees. So are there, there are cases where we allow to, an employee, while that, parts of those background check are pending, to be able to go ahead and start them on work. As there are employees, we can have the provisions where we release them, if either their background check doesn't come back, or the bigger piece in these policies is, if they knowingly make a false statement. Knowingly is different from the inadvertent case, which I highlighted in some of these policies. A knowing case is where you are purposely not disclosing that you had a felony or a conviction that would be a prohibited offense, right? That's different from what Debbie and I sometimes see with volunteers, um, or even once in a while with employee, if it's what we call a non-prohibitive offense, so like, let's say, a petty theft when they were eighteen years old, or in the case where they thought it was expunged, but it ended up didn't, not being expunged, where I sit down and I review that with him, and I will sometimes tell them, you need to submit a recorrected statement about what it was you're doing, and then I'll determine if. you're worthy to be volunteering here or, you know, and then for contractors, there's no options. Contractors by, by our agreements with them have to make sure that they're only having, they do background checks. We have the ability to collect those background checks from them, and if they are doing, and if we determine that either they don't pass a background check, and heaven forbid that, that they were, they falsified a background check, there's no second chances there. I mean, they, the contractors directed, you have to remove them from the work. And then if the contractor doesn't follow with that, there's at some point where they're breaching their contract. That's pretty much what you see is the changes in here, and also what you'll see in the changes in the AR. They are really just, you know, is what helps people like Debbie and Marissa really implement that policy.
So Anthony, on this one, the district may begin the employment of an individual on a probationary basis pending the return. So we say we will let them work before we even got the background check back.
It's probationary.
But still, they're still on campus.
Yes.
Why, why did we include that flexibility?
Well, because some of the provisions when we have employees coming in, a lot of it is because of the timing of the year. When we may have somebody start, we may have somebody start right at the beginning of the school year. Um, it's not been his issue as much this year because we weren't really adding positions early on in the year. But in a lot of school districts in a lot of years, you may be adding a position within the first ten days because of enrollment changes. And sometimes to be able to allow that person to get started, even knowing that the principal still has to provide the supervision of that employee, is less of a calculated risk than trying to start a school year right away, having a substitute come in, do the opening pieces with the student, and then have to then all of a sudden change gears to the person who's gonna be the regular teacher. In that case, it is a calculated risk, and the way the policy is worded is that they may start. So again, it becomes my discretion under the policy whether I actually do let them start or not. Okay, but remember, if I put directly, in all cases, they will not start, then I can't, I have no discretion and I can't adjust to that. So it could be a decision with the board that even in that case, that the board could direct me, and at the second or third reading, I come and I change back to that, well, they will not. But the way we've generally operated is that in some of those limited cases, we have allowed people to start. It's very limited, but it has happened.
I think the, the concern and what we'd have to wrestle with is, what's the larger negative impact if we do put a sub into barely in the case you kinda laid out, and then there's a shifting of gears once a permanent uh, position takes place, is, is that more damaging? Or we allow someone who has no business being in a classroom, to be in a classroom with access to students? So I think that's the.
Yeah, you're definitely correct if the person comes back with a negative background check.
But.
The one case out of so many, that is the negative background check, like I said, everything's a calculated risk. That one person who comes about with a background check, remember, you still have a principal that's responsible for supervision within a building. Okay, we have a little bit more direct control, we have the ability when, when an employee has a violation of these policies, where there are very specific rules about how that, we notify the state. If they're a teacher in that case, we notify TSBC. The ninety-nine and a half, even more percentage of the cases where that person, it does end up coming back with a clean background check, in that case, the calculated risk is that's a little bit better than the disruption you might have if you're having a teacher or a class, a students, a group of thirty students beginning with a substitute, even though knowing I have a person that I have slotted to be able to do that work. That's the calculated risk.
What's the typical turnaround time for a check?
Okay, so for the normal background checks, we can usually get them within about five days, seven days. Um, sometimes at the beginning of the year can be a little bit longer, because the volume that's happening at the beginning of the year can be a little bit longer. Um, with volunteers and contractors, a lot of those individuals do not go through um, what we call a fingerprint background check, it's just a standard background check. Debbie runs a lot of those ones, and those ones happen a lot more quickly. It can be within a day or so.
Longest I've ever had it take is a week, about a week. Yeah.
Other questions I can answer for that one?
I don't, just a final comment, I don't know how comfortable I am allowing people that haven't been fully background checked into a classroom. I don't think that's a calculated risk, I think that's potentially like we're the controlling the access piece, and so, yeah, I don't think I would support that.
I agree.
I don't, I don't know how good the background checks are, and it sounds like there's two, there's a, a more significant one with a fingerprint versus the other. But I suppose we could mitigate the risk somewhat in a shorter amount of time by giving the, the new probationary hire both tests, so you could get a one that's not as good in a short amount of time while we're waiting for the full report as well.
Yeah, and the one that will likely show what, Derek, what you've mentioned is a concern, those people who have those convictions on there, that one will come back sooner with the, you know, because that's on the regular uh, conviction check we do, there's all kinds of acronyms we use, but where the fingerprint one does is that one usually takes a little bit longer because they're referencing FDI databases, not just criminal court databases, which would show general convictions and whatnot. Um, and so those ones happen for employees who are new, or or for volunteers who have what we call direct unsupervised contact with students. Those, and because those cases, you really are having them, you know, and those are usually like your head coaches that, or in some sports where they may volunteer, or, you know, sometimes we call them position coaches in some of the sports, where they may be working solely with that one coach, you know, and that could be a volunteer. So those ones, in those cases, they do go through the fingerprint check as well, and that's the one that takes a bit longer. Okay, any other questions on that one, please?
Well, on that one, so you really feel hand tied by it not, by having, you know, I'm of the same inclination. I don't, I don't like the may there, you know?
And that is a decision for the board to make. That's why I had it as a bullet point to review with you.
But I agree with Phil, like his question, his point, I guess, is it, we are having such a hard time, we need the flexibility?
If we're looking just from this year, I would say no, because we didn't.
No, but even on an average year, is it really that many times?
Well, I'll say in my, in my years, I started doing personnel work back in two thousand and one. Okay, and I will say, in most years, I've had several employees where that's been, that timing has been of an issue. Um, now, how many employees in I have in a year that I've, that I've had a background check done? Where I've, the background check has come back with something positive? Maybe one a year, and that includes all of the employees, all the volunteers.
Well, there's, there's two things here as far as I'm concerned. First of all, there can be a problem with somebody that clears a background check. Doesn't, isn't a cure-all. But by the same token, to purposely put somebody in a position with not knowing from a background check, it almost defeats the purpose of having background checks. I mean, we're talking just five days, I understand that, but still. And so, I'd like, I personally like to see the language shake that we will have it not made.
If there's consensus on that for second reading, it'll come back changed.
Yeah, I, I agree, it's like, kinda like, what's the point of having the background check if we're not gonna implement it on day one, that's.
Yeah.
The one question I couldn't answer for you is, I don't know how many districts have, I know there are a fair amount of districts that do have that may language. After all, OSBA puts it in there as an option.
And I know that, and I know there's a lot of districts too, that make our next, big next door neighbors, one of them, they're famous for they get halfway into the year before they start filling things.
Yeah.
Uh, but we don't generally operate that way. And so.
Thank goodness.
Yeah, is there anybody that would be against us putting the stricter language in there?
I'm good with the stricter language.
And we're, and we're just referencing during that little probationary period of waiting for.
Right.
I, what you.
Okay, that's how it'll come back second read then. Um, again, the other one was, the, there was a delete on that, and that's because this new policy is more inclusive, where in the past, you had a shorter regular policy, and then you have a longer AR. So that's all that is. And then the last item is child abuse. And that one, the note is there, really what the change does, it reiterates, um, that there are some more guidance pieces to the policy, it's really not as much of the legal change in it. Um, so the, the guidance that they add in there is really about one, like for instance, there's a piece where it mentions that if the superintendent is the person that is, um, uh, the alleged abuser, and it's very specific that it comes to me, who then I give it to Phil, the chair. Um, it also makes, it, it also clarifies the situation that when the alleged abuse, or when an employee believes that the alleged abuse is caused by another employee, a volunteer, a contractor, that in addition to the report to the state, they have to do the specific report to my office, and then I have to determine, um, in some cases, it's ODE I have to notify, in some cases, it's TSBC I have to notify, um, and in all those cases, I have to put the person on, um, what they call paid administrative leave. So this piece is the changes in here, what they really do is they kinda clarify that a little bit. Most of the changes you'll see in this one though are really, again, it's the lawyer, different lawyer who writes it in a different way. And this one, actually, you don't see really any, um, um, opportunities to really talk a lot about, um, the difference in options, except for one, where, in this case, you'll notice, we did pick it up. There's one point in here where it talks about the difference with contractors, that we get a report that, um, may or shall prohibit the contractor providing services, and that one, we were very clear that they shall not provide services to the district. That one, I would agree with all of you, I don't know why OSB kept that may in there.
Tony, the only question I had was on, uh, page three, kinda last paragraph, uh, right before it says end of policy, had, texting electronically communicating with the student through contact information gain as a contractor, agent, volunteer for this district is, it looks like there's options for either strongly discouraged or prohibited? I just wasn't sure.
Okay, on page three, the.
Yeah. So right before you get to end of policy.
Second to last paragraph right at the end?
Yeah. Yeah, strongly discouraged and prohibited in brackets, I just wasn't sure which one it was, and I'm in under the suspected abusive child reporting requirements.
Yeah. Yeah, and that one was, uh, interesting to me on that section of it, because the policy that we normally have, of course, is that, um, anybody who comes on the campus has to notify us what they're there for. Um, and even with law enforcement, we do have them, we do check everything, their badges, everything, whatnot. And then, um, but the way the law is, is written is that there's still situations where if they don't fill out the form, that they still could technically interview a student. But the one thing they can't do, and, and it goes on later on that part to mention it specifically, is that the administrator still has to be very competent in form, in actually physically identifying the person. It is weird that they, that we can make them be clear about who their identification is and who they are, but we can't necessarily in all cases make them complete forms and whatnot. It is interesting.
Yeah, I just wasn't, I just wasn't sure which direction the, it was going, is it discouraged or is it prohibited, because those are two.
Yeah, so what we do is we all, in, in all cases, the first question is, is where's your ID? And we do check with them, we have principals even to this day, that when, when they see those IDs, they will often, if there's any question about it, even call their bosses. So we've had people call, um, you know, DHS, or even law enforcement sometimes to verify, especially if it's somebody you don't know of who comes in plainclothes or something. Um, so we do do that part of it. And people aren't gonna talk with a, a student, um, unless we do know of their ID. The big difference here is, do they actually complete a form on that or not?
I'm glad you brought this up, Derek, I have a question on this, just because of the language between contractor, agent, or volunteer. And that could be a coach, a referee, reffing, say, the volleyball or the dodgeball tournament? What if a student from ASB reaches out, because we're a small town, says, hey, can you ref this thing? Technically, that would be in violation of this policy, would it not? I mean, our ASB kids, I mean, shoot, I even got a text from one of them asking to help out with, uh, best fox ever. Hey, would you be a judge? They didn't email me to my district email, they, they texted me because they had my number. So, this is more complex than I was thinking in a small town.
Yeah, and what I bring to you is strictly what's the, the language that's, that's there, and I know, again, and much like the, the first policy we talked about, some of, some of that language, it, again, is not gonna work in all necessary situations. But it is language nonetheless that I'm asked to enforce.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think about this one. Huh.
That's all I had, I just, it was confusing to me, that portion.
I'll talk to you more about that talk later.
Okay.
Exchange ideas back and forth of what this actually looks like.
Okay. Done with first reads? Okay. Public comment, uh, section, do we have any one for, on either discussion or action items here? Do we online?
No hands raised online right now.
Okay. Then we'll go into our action items. First would be the school calendar. Entertaining a motion on adopting the twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
I move to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six school year calendar as presented tonight. Second?
It's been moved in second to adopt the twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six school calendar as presented tonight, although, oh, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye? Unanimous. Okay, then on the second reads, uh, first policy would be IGBA. Is there a motion to adopt it?
I, I was just wondering if, sorry, I know this probably is not probably, what if we, can we group them if there's?
I think we can.
Well.
If I make a motion to group them?
Eh, you can make a motion to group them, as long as no one wants to pull one out.
Okay, cool. I move that we adopt the second reads, including IGBA, IGBAF, IGBAF AR, IGBAG, IGBAJ, IGBAJ AR for adoption as final reads.
Okay.
Second?
I was hoping I'd catch you for your second. Uh, the IGBAF AR, we don't need to adopt.
Because it's a delete.
It's a, well, it's a, some ARs we need to adopt by law, and some we don't, that one we don't. The last AR we do. And so.
But the other AR we would?
Right, the IGBAJ AR, that one we need to adopt.
So I move to amend the motion, um, excluding IGBAF dash AR.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved in second to, uh, amend the motion, Josh's motion. Uh, all those in favor of the amendment, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye? Okay. And now we'll deal with the amendment as the, the motion as amended. And so, uh, the motion to, uh, adopt IGBA. And so the motion to adopt IGBA, IGBAF, IGBAG, IBG, GBAJ, and IGBAJ AR. Any discussion on that? Okay. And all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'll oppose, passed unanimously. And let's see, future agenda items, anything? Okay, before we adjourn, just want to remind everybody that May 20th is election day and we've got board positions up. Good candidates, please vote. You're adjourned.